...with open forum, residents, students, and parents and guardians and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask that speakers to remember that I will prohibit the board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance. With that, we have two signups tonight. We'll start with Carl Sells.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Carl Sells and I reside at 655 Northwest Street in Truro. I live where the road change, road surface changes from blacktop to gravel. And I'm a husband, a parent, a veteran Marine. I've enjoyed living here for the past three years. It's a nice neighborhood. Really do enjoy it. As you know, West Street is a main artery thoroughfare, used mainly by residents in and out of the county, as well as the school bus, bus drivers and the buses. I'm here tonight to share my concern of the increasing speeds that I'm seeing in front of my home. I work from home. It's a daily occurrence is what it seems like. So at 8:00 AM in the morning, the buses come by after they drop all the students off. There's a great big line, eight or nine buses. 3:00 PM is kind of the same story. The drivers drive down to the bus barn, fit in their bus, and they do the route. I will note that only, not only do the school buses exceed the speed from time to time, and it's not every school bus that does this, it's also residents in and out of the county. A few months ago, a speed checker was put in place near my property. And at first, it seemed to work, and gradually, it gets ignored. So I have a concern with that. One, I understand that the sheriff's a little short on people on staff. And number two, the city doesn't staff a permanent police officer. They hire out to the sheriff. So the sheriff isn't always here all of the time. Recently, on February 9th, I was outside working in my front yard when I witnessed a disturbing incident. At both 4:20 PM and 4:40 PM, two of the district's nine buses were seen speeding as they headed north back to the bus barn. At 4:40 PM, while heading north, the driver swerved into the southbound lane to avoid one of the students who was outrunning for track practice. The speed limit on this stretch of road is 25 miles per hour. The only posted sign that I know of is at the county line, the next property to the north of me. And you only see one sign as you head south. So I had asked the city to post that little contraption down there that tracks speed. And like I said earlier, nobody's paying attention to it. So I wanted to bring this concern to the school board and see if we can do something with that. I have security camera footage of many times in the past three years that I've lived here. And I can't blame one person, one individual, one driver. It's everybody. I've been pulled over, so I'm not at fault, you know? I'm not saying that I walk around with a golden halo on my head. So as a member of the IS-35 School District neighborhood, I would implore you to acknowledge and address this concern before someone is hurt, someone runs off the road. I've got four huge trees in the front yard, mature trees, better than two foot in diameter. That would make a heck of a dent in somebody's person or vehicle. So thank you for allowing me to share this concern tonight, and I look forward to working with the school board in the future. And I hope in doing so, you will have some influence in improving the current situation. One other topic I would like to add, and I appreciate the school system itself putting down the treatment on the gravel road that keep the dust knocked down, once a year, really doesn't do the job. I can't open the windows on my house at all. So, and I understand, we're in the country. I'm at the end of the line of the blacktop where it turns to gravel. I understand. Anything that you guys can do, and anything that you've done in the past as far as treating that road has been greatly appreciated when it's first down, but it seems to wear off within a month or two, or you do it right before the school year starts, but later in the fall and early spring, it's kicking back up again. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Nathan Brownlee.
Hi, my name is Nathan Brownlee. I'm from St. Charles. I just want to say thank you to the administration for hiring Hannah Bedwell. I know I speak for all the FMA alumni members. We had a little bit of a scheduling issue, trying to get some more people rounded up to get here. But I am grateful that we have Hannah Bedwell. I am very excited to look, to be looking forward to working with her. And the community members that I have spoken with are very excited about this. So I just want to say thank you for making a very good choice. And that's all I got.
Anybody? All right. I had just those two signups. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Next, we'll move on to the student representative report.
All right. So currently, there was a learning, there's service learning opportunity for juniors and seniors at Holland Farms on the 13th. And then there's an NHS trip this past Friday. They went to Windsor Manor in Indian Valley for service activities and like hanging out with the residents and playing games, talking to them. And then afterwards, they went to Dave and Buster's for a little bit of fun. FFA week was last week, and there were dress-up days. Monday was dresses as a favorite teacher. Tuesday was Adam Sandler Day, and as well as the teacher breakfast was that morning. Wednesday was FFA colors, and Thursday was country versus country club. And Friday was farmer day, and the members can drive the tractors to school as well. And there was quite a few people that drove them, I want to say like 10 members. And then many people and students are looking forward to spring break coming up and enjoy a little bit of a break. And then as for sports, the winter sports came to an end, and fall sports are starting to come up. Track started today, and I know baseball's been going on here or there. But as for, as wrestling goes, the boys won districts, and 11, they had 11 state qualifiers because of winning. And at state, Eli Green finished third overall, and was one pin away from tying the most pins in a single season. So that's all I got. Any questions?
FFA week looked fun. You said there was 10 tractors, or so, on Friday?
Yeah.
I think the FFA Alumni Association should find ways to donate tractors. Look at that. No, I'm not sure. Yeah. I was going to say, look at his face, yeah. No, it's awesome. I look forward to that FFA week.
Did you dress up for Adam Sandler Day?
No, I didn't.
What were some of the, what did some of the kids dress up as for that day?
You know, I didn't really see a whole lot of people dress up that day, to be honest with you.
Well, if anybody wore a big tee shirt and basketball shorts, that's Adam Sandler.
Yeah. Yeah, I did see a whole lot of people really dress up for at least Adam Sandler Day. The farmer day, that was a good one. And then country versus country club, that was another good one, too. So, yeah.
And you guys make the teachers the breakfast?
Yeah. We did that Tuesday morning. It went pretty good. Had lots of leftovers, which is, you know, it's okay. Hopefully, get a better turnout next year. But, yeah. Some, any other questions?
The service learning, did you attend all of those, or was one of your favorites over the other one?
I did not do the service learning part of it. I, I can give it back to you on the ample information. Yeah.
Good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We'll move on to the principals' report. We'll start with Ms. Woodson.
Um, I, I think this is, we're going to kind of get into the U and I thing a little bit later. Okay. So I won't spend too much time on the U and I piece, but just super good opportunity, and I think I've probably already referenced this a few times, but they have this program, and about 15 people get in through the entire state. And this year, Nikki Truman and Ally Lyons are in that. Julie did apply, and she got accepted for that. But in my work with those people that do that, they were willing to try a school-wide approach, which is new for them. But just the cultural value, if I can, and you know, there's going to be fun, too. But my thought process is this, if we can have a university's resources to teach our staff, if we can tailor that learning to their interests and their needs, while we also really focusing on that literacy aspect across our building, and if I can get almost nine, you know, 100% of my staff to a secluded location for two and a half days, just the team-building capacity would just be fantastic. So that is a work in progress, and we're continuing to build that. One of the team members will be here in March to help, you know, well, pick up and keep building that. So just a really cool PD thing that will, we'll see where it takes us. It's going to be really cool. So that's how it works. I skipped over two things. Let me address those two things. I didn't realize. Third and fourth grade hallway transformation, this is about, it's a kind of a philosophy by some popular educators, and they do these classroom transformations. Like if you're going to teach about, you know, I don't know, economics, then they're, they're kind of that build a target in your classroom and really like, like, let's do this, like having the real, the actual things there. So, but hallway transformation for us is that way to just really show the kids like, school's cool, we think you're awesome, build them up. So we're going to do a hallway transformation over spring break in the third and fourth grade hallway, because when they get back, it's about ISAS time, and just really pump them up. So we have a Super Mario theme going on. I put it out on my parent update, so we'll be needing lots of hands to help put that together. We had one of the veterinary clinics in Winterset donate $500 for that project. And so we spent every penny we could, and we got a lot of homemade mushrooms and stuff going on down there, so it'll be exciting. So that's that. Passion projects are, every year, a teacher is required to go through a process of developing a goal, professional goal, and kind of building that goal throughout the year and trying to improve themselves in whatever target area they are seeking to improve on. We, I'm trying to, sometimes that can be a little bit flat. It can seem like a, like a hoop to jump through. And so the challenge is, growing is good for everybody. Like everybody needs to grow. I need to grow. Everybody needs to grow. And so trying to make that less of a hoop and more of a, something I'm really passionate about. So at the next PD day, we're having a passion project fair, and I repurchased, I hope they're here, good old-fashioned science boards, you know, the trifolds. And the teachers are going to kind of share with each other that piece, and that's kind of a step further than, than I've gone yet before and they've ever gone. And so I'm excited to see how they kind of take charge and act as a leader and a kind of a presenter in sharing their knowledge with their peers. So that will be on March 8th. So that's about U and I. Let me see. Okay. I talked to you last time that we were in that process of data collection, so I've got a lot of charts there, so I'll just kind of walk you through what you're looking at. That first set is about CBMR, and I tried to put a title, it must be up on the, on the top of the page, it says, the one, Sharon, can you scroll up just slightly? Right. Okay. On top of each chart section, I tried to put what the data is. So CBMR is to us words per minute and accuracy. In that table, you see, and grades two through four take it, but also first grade starts in the, in the winter. So they'll take it twice. So this chart is the benchmarks set by the state. So you can see at first grade, in order to be proficient or, you know, purple, they would have to read at least 37 words per minute. Okay? Second grade, right now, in order to be purple, they'd have to read at least 84 words per minute, and so on. So that gives you the, what do they have to do to get there? And then you can see, first grade is there, and I did do the longevity table. So this column would be winter of last year, this column would be spring of last year, and this column would be winter of this year. Remember, they don't take it in the fall, so that's why this one has weird gaps. And it's not the same group of kids. So like, these are last year's first graders, and this is this year's first graders. So things you want to keep in mind when you look at that.
Real quick, sorry. And I was reading this, trying to follow it, and one, it was really tiny, two, it didn't have that context that you just explained. So I want to make sure I understand this. So first off, the individual ones are first grade up top, and then...
Right. If you see, see where it says one, two, three, four?
Okay. So these are one, two, three, four. So if I'm looking at one of the bars, let's say on the first grade...
Okay, first grade?
Yep. That means that was last year's first grade, and then the second grade, I would compare the second grade box to that.
Right. So these two scores go with now this score. So they, they ended at 55% here, and they started at 52% here, which is pretty impressive with summer dip and the complexity of text getting higher.
Yep.
So you can kind of see that. Yep.
So that's, that's huge. Does the state or wherever you get this from, give it, present in a way that it shows a group of students and how they progressed?
It doesn't. We have...
You would have to manually do that?
Yeah. And I would say we have probably that. I just, you said, I think you said last time, you liked the pretty chart, so I was like, all right, I'll use that chart.
I love it. I just couldn't follow it. Now that I have the context, I can follow it.
Yep. Yep. So...
She did the pretty teller.
I tried to get you the chart, you won it.
And I agree.
So you can see things that are sticking out, just like we talked about in the, like, fourth grade, you can see glaringly, this isn't normal, right? We're up to 74%. Our goal is 80. That's kind of that MTSS mark where you want to meet 80% of your kids' needs with that tier-one approach. But this, this light purple section is not, is unprecedented, right? The other thing that we're seeing is, the state says they should grow like two to three words per minute weekly, not two, two, three. They say two words per minute weekly is a, like a rigorous growth. And right now, we've got minimal students not making rigorous growth. And so we're tracking also with that, who's not moving enough, right? And so that helps, too.
So unprecedented in a good way, if I'm reading correctly, right? You're, you're doing more of five to six?
This light purple is college pathway. Because we're, we're clear up in the, now, we still got 26% that aren't there yet. But you also see, the goal is to get more white purple and less bright, bright pink, right? And you can see just from the distance, the shrinkage and the growth of that. So like, things are coming, and we started in kind of a rough spot, and you can see just by looking at those charts, we're, we're getting there. It's not linear. Learning's not linear, but we're getting there. So the next chunk is early reading, which is what kindergarten and first grade take. And that table you see right there, down a little bit more, Sharon?
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted me to stop it.
No, you're, you're, thank you. I love your sass tonight. So again, just trying to give you guys what the state said as the benchmark. So this table is just saying, you know, in the fall, kindergarten takes these three subtests, and these are the, these are the numbers they're looking for. And what do they take these for? So you just kind of walk your sub across, and then it does do a composite score. And so there's the overall composite score, and this is what I'm showing in the tables, that overall composite score in these. And they don't do a college pathway on the early reading, so you won't see any light purple.
So the overall composite score is what they're using in the graph?
Those four subtests get combined to that composite score in this, this particular data piece. Okay? Then next one would be early math, same kind of thing, only they only use three subtests to make up the composite. And you can see kind of where we're at there. We have our first 90. I want to recognize that. First 90 on the board there, so I'm going to take that.
What do you attribute to? That's a massive, you know, that's almost a, what am I looking at, 14% or, yeah, 14% gain? What, if you had to pick a couple initiatives that you guys have been doing, do you think made the biggest impact on that? Is it the win time, or...
It's not the win time, and it's not the win time because first grade doesn't use any of their win time for math. And that's kind of a, what do your, we have this much win time, what do you guys feel like your kids need the most? And right now, they don't feel like math is the target, and you see where they're at in reading, so logic, right? I, my first, my first answer is, I have three amazing teachers who are working hard and doing it together, and they're what I would refer to as an extremely effective team. And when you got that, everything else rolls pretty well. So I, I think it starts with that, and that's just my philosophy.
They're really doing an amazing job. I don't know if they're here, but thank you.
Well, there's one of them back there, for sure. Mine, there's two of them back there. So the next one is a math, and that's a test, and I don't put a whole lot of stock into it. It's, what do you call that, like an automaticity check? Okay, so like, like, again, kind of like words per minute, but like math, okay? It's not one that we reference a whole lot, but we did administer it, so I put it on there. The one below that is star reading, which is in it more of a, it would remind you more of what the ISAS looks like. It's not so much a screener. It has aspects of screening, but also aspects of more of a diagnostic, or gives you some core standards-based looks at things, too. And you can kind of see our history of taking that there and moving in the right direction with that. 72%, that usually really lines up well with ISAS. So in my, in my history of administering both, so I think that's telling of kind of where we're going with that. You can see the growth there when we took it. I've measured specifically each grade, can give it a little bit more, they can give it as much as they want to. But I tried to take three data points there, and you can see the change from 55 to 72. You can see third grade really took off there. They're just about green on my scale, so. And then that last chunk I have is our school-wide data, our, our goal, right? Our goal is literacy-based, and it's about words per minute, and it's about early reading, and it's about preschool foundational letter identification knowledge. And I put that top tables last year, and that gives you where we started, and just kind of gives you a good visual of where we've, and I didn't have the preschool data there. I, I will try to find that and add it back in. But it shows you where we were and where we are now, and so I think it's good visuals.
So the question I had on this one is, I couldn't understand, the red, and it's because you're not meeting the percentage you want to be at for your goal?
Right. Those, those colors are Woods's fake numbers I make up. So like, in my head, 60 and below, that's going to be red, like, it doesn't feel good. And yellow is we're getting closer, and then green would be like where, where we need to be.
Okay. That's, so you have those ranges. You have goals to set. You want to be, you want to be at something, it looks like green, 80% and above, 80% and above. You're, you're feeling kind of good, you're on track. If you're between 60 and 80, and then below 60, you focus on why you're red and you're implementing things to get it done.
Right. Those reds stick out, and then that's something we want to target and make sure we're having, you know, action plans around and what have you. But we went, we, like, I think we had this conversation, 50, we got to 70, went back to 60. We've made it to 71, which is our high ever, and we've got, you know, our goal is nine more percent. So we're going to see what we can do.
Awesome.
Nine more percent. We can do that, right? Anyways, any questions, thoughts, concerns for me?
Other than thank you for putting together the pretty chart for me, and thank you for training me. Now that I'm understanding it, I, I, this is good. It helps me understand where you're at and where you're headed, and also to celebrate an amazing accomplishments. Like that, that's some huge leaps and bounds. So congratulations.
That's not a normal growth in a year and a half.
That's phenomenal.
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Did you just, Woods?
Yep.
Did you skip these magnets? I just scrolled down.
Oh, I, well, I, sometimes I don't read everything, but I, well, I can tell you about those.
We just got those. Are they working on your door?
Well, some are a little more flimsy. Like I've had two teachers, like, can I try a different one?
Was that the wood, with the metal?
Ours are staying, ours are mostly staying, yeah. Ours are mostly staying. I've had two, one that was like warped, and one that like just, like, the second I stuck it up there, you know?
So what she's talking about is a magnet that goes on this door. And it actually sits on the, yeah, it sits on the door frame, and it, it's magnetized, so you slide it down, you can keep your door locked, and then kids can still get in and out, and if there's an emergency, all you do is pull the magnet. You don't have to find your keys, you don't have to try and scramble, so it's just a quicker way to secure your room. And so the magnets are what she's talking about. It's just probably an inch by five inches, and you just slide it over on the, on the frame side, and then the door can stay locked.
Yep. And it's been interesting, because I even myself, and I see kids doing it all the time, they're like, this door's locked, this door's locked. No, okay, just push the door. It's not really locked. But the door handles are locked, and so it like takes you off guard for a second, you're like, I can't get in. Yes, I can. So that's been fun. I should probably do a compilation of people trying to open doors with those magnets on, but, yeah. So just an extra safety piece, and that, that I think has been really receptive, accepted well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
All right. I'm going to try and set a record, probably quick them up here. You guys can thank me later. Intenscan kicked off this morning, just over 110 kids, 112, to be exact, so it's the largest number we've ever had. I can tell you, it was actually hard fitting in the gym and in the way that we normally run things. It's making it harder to figure out how we're going to get the groups through the weight room. So we're kind of going to adjust with it being so nice tomorrow. We've never been able to go outside. So tomorrow's is after school, where this morning's is before, so we're going to get outside. So our speaker, Colonel Chidley, this morning knocked it out of the park. We threw some stuff on Facebook about him this morning, but it just was an awesome message for our kids, and we're going to keep that going with all the other preservers that are this, up this year. I also listed on here, just so we can keep track of all the ones we had the last two years. It's a pretty impressive list when you look through it. So, and then, cool thing, come into our fitness center, we're going to do a vending machine. Kids have been asking about it. Coaches have been complaining about the number of kids leaving and going across the street to the gas station, usually getting things like Celsius and all the junk to drink after they work out. So this vending machine will be all healthy drinks. There's a protein shake thing that the kids are getting after every workout this week to try them, and then Powerade, Body Armor, water will be in there. So, and that'll be for use by our athletes and then the community as well when they're using our fitness center. So, questions?
Going to have a camera on that thing? It's going to get hip checked.
It's, it's right there. Yep, there's a camera already in there.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Ms. Woodson? Can you be in?
I failed to get my board report in, and Friday afterward, I went to submit, and guess who I sent it to?
Oh, coffee.
Guess who I sent it to, though?
You start off.
I started working on my weekly this week, and I sent it to Sharon Woodson instead of Sharon Detling. Because you know the first thing that pops up. So anyway, I'm going to go quick, because I know that there's a lot on the agenda, but Smart Fast, we began doing that last week. We're going to give it a couple more weeks, and then Mr. Beckel had made a survey for staff, so we'll be submitting this survey, too, and catching teachers' thoughts in middle school. Valentine's crush, they made about $500 student council, so congrats to them.
Is that like a dollar a can?
Yeah.
But those kids are fun that week.
And every student gets one, so we make sure of that. And then Fast Bridge, I'll be bringing our information next month, as we have been working as we have been working through that and putting students in different groups as we look at that data. We also started implementing number talks for math because our math scores weren't, it kind of took a slip. So we thought we would collectively work towards supporting the, the math. I will tell you that both my math teachers are feeling pretty good about how well students are doing on their practice ISS. So that's the next assessment that we're really gearing up for. Computer class, they're doing some really fun activities. So I thought it'd be fun to put some pictures in there. Social studies, as you can see, what I wanted to really impress upon is that students did some research, but also some retired teachers came back to help support that work. Actually, she had four, but two people were sick last week. So that's kind of exciting to have the students present. And they did very well from what I hear. And then today we had seventh and eighth graders go to Unacquired. And I listed the names for you to read. And then the upcoming is JA Biz Town, which is kind of exciting. Our sixth graders will be participating in this hands-on activity. It's all about math, but also about community. It's about taking a role that you, you are the business person and you have to work with other people collaboratively. And then we will go up to JA Biz Town in April, I believe. Like you do like six to eight weeks. And then you take community members. So I'm looking for parents to help us to go there. I think we have like 15 parents or adults that we need to go. But it's a very good experience and I'm pretty excited for that work. But the three teachers that are going to be working with that are Mrs. Gutzmer, Mrs. Coder, and Mrs. Cormany. But there are a lot of things coming down. We're going to have the Wax Museum again at the end of the year as well as our Science Fair. So pretty excited about that. Any questions?
That JA Biz Town, has that been going for a long time?
Yeah.
I feel like I participated in that. I don't know if I was a kid or as a parent when Meredith was in sixth grade.
It's probably when she was in.
Sixth grade?
I was not that old. Sorry, I wasn't going to be rude to you.
I'll say it, it's fine.
And then the, the computer class, is that new this year? Have we, we've had that?
Yeah, last year was the first.
Last year was the first year?
We had a different teacher.
I just found it interesting, hundreds coming home, writing CSS and HTML. It's about, the only thing I can help them with is homework. And I'm like, ooh, you know, let's go do that. So I, really, really awesome that we're doing that.
I've been working on coding, so. All right, good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Beckel?
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So online you'll see mostly feedback from Smart Pass. Like Ms. Woodson said, we are a few weeks ahead of them as, as far as implementing it. Just to keep a little bit of background, the reason we went to something like this, my first couple of weeks here when I was meeting with teachers this summer saying, hey, there are some things I need to work on right away as a new supervisor. Some of the most repetitive feedback I got was, hey, we need help get in the hallways, kind of clean that up. Got a little hallway traffic, got some wanderers, got some stuff going on. What can we do to fix that? Initially, some of the conversation was around the old school student planners. That way teachers could see how many times a student had left to use the restroom or something like that throughout the day. Sometimes those just turn into like an expensive piece of trash, so it's a problem. So we tried to figure out some way to incorporate a little technology. This program has worked great for us from my perspective or from most of them. Looking through the feedback, just kind of, I'll let you guys kind of read through and ask questions. But most of the teachers felt like it's been effective. Out of the 24 responses, 79% or almost 80% of them said it was, they felt like it was effective. Some of the stuff that we're kind of gleaning from this feedback that we got was some teachers need to feel empowered again. Like they, some of them say, hey, this Smart Pass system makes me feel like every time a kid makes a pass, I got to let them go. But really just kind of doing some more work on, hey, look at the pass. Ensure that they haven't gone five times already in the last two hours. You know, take, take a look at it and you can't deny it. You can't say, hey, I want you to wait a minute to work at a more appropriate spot or whatnot, so. Feel like it's been great, a great tool, especially for people who do manage a lot of the traffic, study hall, front office. The hall monitor feature has been fantastic. As me or any other teacher as we walk around the hallway, we can have that up and see the kids that are in the hall, see how long they've been in the hall. Are they supposed to be there? Do they have a pass? And I can see that the hallway has been way more cleared up. There's less hallway noise during instruction. And one of the pieces we've also been working on limiting is students showing up to a class that they're not in while instruction's happening. Just so the teacher can focus on instruction. Most of the time those visits are like for good reasons, like, hey, I want to see my favorite teacher. Problem is the teacher like has to turn to the door and say, hey, hold on and come back later. So overall, it's having a positive impact in how we do things. Any questions on Smart Pass before I move on?
So they can see, so the teacher can see like if that kid went, the last two periods went out to the bathroom?
Yep.
That's awesome.
So they can pull right up and you can see how many times they've left. That's bad day.
That way they're not going to the bathroom every period.
Can they also see like a history of how many times a student asked in their class?
Um, we can, we can pull that, David. I pull that at least weekly. Tiffany helps me out a ton with it. Shows a, hey, Adam, I want to check this kid out quick. They've been out, they've had 20 passes in the last three days. And that's when I call them and I say, hey, I'm going to reduce your passes to three a day rather than unlimited.
Okay, because you know, like if they're leaving the same class, that kind of gets to be, okay, why do you have to go during this class?
Right. Well, I promise you most teachers recognize that. Oh, hey, my finger fire now.
A benefit that this brings is when we go to have a conversation with the parents, say, hey, listen, your student's not going to be able to leave my class any longer. They, they keep leaving, they're missing a lot of instruction. And whether it's going to affect their grade. And when we pull up, we have to look, see 15 times in the last week.
Are you looking at or doing anything with the data for like the people that are, I know we'll have some that are like, why were you gone for 15 minutes?
Yes, yeah, that's an immediate conversation. Like, hey, can you turn in the restroom for 15 minutes today? A lot of times it's, I forgot to turn it off when I got back.
Yeah.
So you get a lot of that, but sometimes you catch them wandering or using the bathroom. This one's kind of iffy because it's bathroom. We probably need to do some work on that one.
I noticed we're missing a sink.
A sink that installs this. Yeah, so sometimes the kids will go up front and it's like, okay, yeah, okay, you know, I don't blame you. But it's sparking a lot more conversation. And the kids are responding very well. So like, they're very respectful. We have the best kids. I mean, seriously, our kids are awesome. But they just, they're responsible for things like this. And they're following the processes and so.
For me, first off, thank you for doing the survey. I think that was awesome. It was great to read through the comments, which you're right, I think, you know, 80, 90% supportive. The, the things that heat mapped that I saw were, you know, kids taking multiple passes throughout the day. And I, I was going to ask something you already addressed, but I'll ask some more directly. Is there a way that when a kid fills out a pass, that a teacher sees it and it says, warning, kid's been in the bathroom 15 times a day. Warning, Mr. Beckel's talked to him and he's limited to three a day or, or something, right? So they don't have to go dig and search through that history. It's just, it empowers them, so they don't feel guilty. They're like, you know what? Other people have noticed this, no, you don't get a pass.
It's currently not that specific.
Okay.
But what I can do is I can, if I had to talk to a student and I limit them, like I've got one student that right now has got zero passes. Between conversation with parents and, yep, zero. But basically that doesn't mean they can't use the restroom. It just takes special, like a teacher's got.
Yeah, override. That's what my next question is. Is there's a way to route for certain students that it has to be approved by you instead of the teacher to take that off their, burden off their plate for those more challenging ones, so.
But the teacher can see the other passes, right? Like they thought like, oh man, this came from Beckel. You just, you've used two or three already.
They might have to do a little digging to see it, but it's there. So it's not, it's not like as simple as just touching on it and seeing it.
They have to dig down and research history.
Yeah, once there's a way to configure, the one we have that has it on there, it's like two have already used. So you can see it.
What's your system that you guys use? Sorry, you're on stop.
I think it's secure, what's yours?
It's Smart Pass, it's ours.
I think ours is like maybe secure, securely.
Securely?
Securely, yeah. Because then it plays into also our monitoring, like screen monitoring. So like when we're watching to make sure they're on with the appropriate stuff.
Is there a guardian here?
Yeah, we just want to, you know, X it out there, games they're playing, write your paper. But it, it all plays into that same one. And so in that one, it doesn't have like, there are five passes and it'll say, used two already. I click on it, it'll say they were just in last hour. I'm like, yeah, you're not going again unless you're sick. So you can, can see it. But so I was wondering if there's a way on, on this one, if you can configure where, just the setup, I don't know.
That's the feature from the.
Yeah, they've been pretty responsive to want to ask questions, so it's.
Nice.
All right, and the last part, just, you know, echoing off of the FFA days, the Ag days. So you can see pictures of the kids cooking some breakfast for the staff. I didn't get to make it out there, but everybody that went out there said it was fantastic. And then the second picture is that the tractors, I drove the tractors to school. Had to park them up front, thought it'd be nice and visible up there. I didn't take a picture from the subway, but that's kind of.
But you got a picture from the subway, yeah.
So a few of them ended up taking a group lunch. My thing was all parents called them in, so it wasn't like they were, they were true. So you knew where they were. It was just kind of funny that one kind of ratted himself out online. So, yeah, good week, great week to see the kids and, yeah.
And when they cook in the face, that's their?
Whole staff.
Whole staff. People don't go out there. It's like my favorite day of the year, is teacher breakfast.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Denton, superintendent's report?
Yeah, so we have a couple of things. I didn't put a ton on facilities. These are the standing agenda items that have been kind of brought to the forefront a couple of meetings. I did want to talk a little bit about what we're calling an innovative facility or an intergenerational learning possibility. When, when we got feedback on facilities for cost from the community, I think one of the concerns was the, the kind of the overall price tag. And so one of the things that we've been really working hard on is trying to figure out how, how to bring that cost down for our taxpayers, but also provide services. We have been approached in the past about being a congregant meal site for elderly people because I know Warren County no longer has their congregant meal site. And so the conversation that Mrs. Woods and I started is if we had a site or a facility that had a community room and we knew the regulations for DHS for providing meals for our littlest people in the daycare, and we knew the guidelines for providing possible congregant meals for our older people, could we, could we create one facility that could possibly do both? And I look at it from an education standpoint and I think about maybe a retired person who wants to come and read books to kids. So, you know, they can come get a meal and then they can read books. Or I also thought about if we have a photography class and we have a seat open, could they take the class with our students, something that maybe they had an interest in? You see that a lot with community colleges, but we don't have that close by. So we're just exploring the possibilities around this. So I've been in contact with some of the county supervisors. And I'm going to try and get to all of the, all nine county supervisors that feed into our system. One of the challenges we have with a, with an opportunity like this is when we're talking about funding. So grant possibilities or USDA has a loan that you can, you can get really cheap interest over a 40-year payout that doesn't, then, you know, it's not a tax burden for the, for the public because in theory our program would pay for itself and pay that loan off. So trying to work through some of those numbers. But when you serve three different counties, funding streams are really tricky. And so I've had conversations, I was in Clark this morning. Governor Reynolds was down there and we visited. And one of the things that we talked about was this kind of, of possibility and how funding for that is really tricky. Because we're, we're in Truro, Iowa. And typically when they look at counties, they're looking at winter sets, Indianolas. Well, that doesn't really reflect our population. It doesn't reflect who we are. And so we're trying to figure out how to, how to have those interagency conversations at the state level to help support what we're doing. And that's just an ongoing process. So I wanted you to be aware because we are starting that conversation. I guess if, if you have feedback on whether you think that's a good idea or not, you can let us know. But we're, we're getting to the point now where our, our phase one of our facilities project is kind of moving along. And I think we're pretty excited about that. And this is something that we're planning for about a year and a half, two years from now. And so I want to get the information now, right? So as we make this decision, we're able to make a sound decision based on, number one, does our community want it? And number two, can we, can we create a facility for that? Because when we go back to Garrett and we say, hey, Garrett, we want this now as part of it, he's got to, you know, figure out what that's going to look like and if it's cost effective. So all of those things kind of take time and getting input on that takes time. So we're starting the conversations now to see even if it's feasibility. And then we'll, we'll bring what we find to you guys at a future date. But it is out there. We are starting to talk about it, so I wanted you guys to be aware. The other standing item is standard reference grading. This is changes, possible changes to that handbook. And so I'm going to have Mr. Beckel also kind of be a part of this because we took this to, I was not in the meeting. It was, I think, Mr. Beckel and Mrs. Good led this. And what they did is they kind of took some of the big ideas that had come from our work session and thought, okay, if we're going to make changes to the handbook, what do we recommend? And so these recommended changes are first from the whole staff, the whole nine through 12 staff. And then you see some blue, which were specific things that people had contacted me about and said, hey, do we need to keep like, you can see the online hybrid or remote. That was from COVID, so we took that out. So you can see some of the cleanup is in blue. But the, the red or the recommendation or the changes, possibilities from the teachers. And then the blue are, I sent this out originally. And then I sent out an added or a revised version and that's what's in the blue. So one of the conversations that we've had, a lot of conversation around is students getting credit or, or getting, having credit or the, the assignments, the bodies of evidence being counted for a grade. And I think that as we talked with the committee, the challenge with that is, is that a lot of times it's just practice. And so one of the things that the committee came up with or that the teachers came up with is, number one, you either get the natural consequence, you know, you don't practice, you don't, you don't get the, the work in that you want. Your, your score reflects that and you just have to live with it. But the other thing we talked about is as a teacher, I have the leeway to say, you needed to have these four pieces done, these assignments done. You don't have them done, you can't take the test until they're done. And that's always been on the, on the kind of the books. But I think we've reemphasized that with teachers. And I, and I hate to say this, but sometimes I think we get into the, the mindset of we have to get permission. And a lot of times as administrators, we think that that's just what they're doing. And so there's sometimes disconnect there. So I'm going to let, so that's the first one, just as an example of a walkthrough. But I'm going to let Adam kind of talk to you about the, the cheating. And you can see there's been quite a bit of work on that. And just kind of the discussion from the whole group.
Can you just take a pause real quick? So this, this is an update. There's no action to prove. There's going to be continuing conversations and refinements and additions to this. You're just bringing the first half.
Right, right. And as soon as I explain it, we'll get feedback from you guys about what you want us to take back. So, yeah, that's exactly right.
Result in my handbook changes.
Right.
Yes, ultimately.
And that would be, and that would be in June typically when we bring the handbook changes.
So cheating, just kind of fill some more around it. So cheating, just kind of fill some more around it, because if you look at our handbook right now, it's not worded very, well, that's our G in mind, it's kind of written still for traditional grading. So we just asked, you know, like, how can we update this a little bit, add some more stuff around it? So looking at the substantiated versus suspected, the difference between the two. And substantiated means there's strong evidence that the student cheated. Suspected means, hey, your paper sounds a mouth like somebody else's paper. I think you copied somebody. So substantiated was, right now is loss of credit. Those students get the opportunity to redo the assessment or complete with the assessment at the discretion of the teacher. Successful completion will be required for credit to be obtained. Right now, like, if you get a zero on the standard, you would be currently failing for lack of evidence that you're meeting all the standards of the class. So just trying to find a way for that student to make that up. The big addition, though, was multiple offenses. So we talked about kind of scaffolding or tiering it, so to say. First offense, one day ISS, and noted on the student profile, so basically put it in a composite behavior event. Second day, our second offense is three days ISS, and also noted on the student profile, and potentially also a violation of good conduct policy. Okay? But I need to have a lot more talk around some of these things, because there's going to be some, probably opinions on both sides in this one.
Okay, quick question. I don't understand, so you have substantiated up there, and that first bullet that tells me the first time they do it, they're going to get a zero, and they're going to redo the assessment, right? That's, but then you have first offense down there, saying they're going to get one day, and so it's suspended. Oh, that's on top, so it's both.
A consequence and the action in the class.
The top is how do they recover the credit? And the bottom is, as a result of the decision or behavior, what happens?
Kind of like, I think ultimately what we want to avoid is just getting the zero for it. Still trying to figure out a way for them to demonstrate their knowledge. The third offense, the five days ISS, I don't know about that one. Five days in my office, I don't know. But it'll be additional violations of good conduct policy. So those are, those are the things thrown out there for now, the feedback we got from our, our staff groups. And they are random groupings, so it wasn't people who had an interest in a certain topic. We just had it number out, 123, 123, and got them together and had them process the questions. So that was the processing that came out of the group.
Can you elaborate more on suspected?
Yeah, suspected is where a teacher might be looking at an assignment, and the words are reading almost identically. You know, like, and it's not like multiple choice, it would be more.
Not like they read the same book and were given a book report on the same deal, but like.
They might be given a book report on the same deal, but it reads almost identically.
It might be like you and me turn a paper, and it's like, wow. They just changed the words, like, you are to yours.
On the suspected, we're not really, we're just going to redo their stuff.
Yeah, you might want to read that and rewrite.
It means we can't really prove it, but we have some suspicion.
So that would be no first, second, third offense on the suspected, the suspected is, okay.
We don't necessarily need a consequence or want to have a consequence.
I just wanted to clarify, because I was like, because you suspect somebody doing something. But you want to say something's afoot, and you're kind of doing it.
He's reading, well, he revisited that one. But the thing is, is like, let's say a kid walks in, you see him, you see him going like this on their desk and moving their arm, they got the answer written on a notebook.
Oh, no, I was pretty clear on what that, I was pretty clear on that one. But just the suspected got me. I was like, how far are we going to take this?
So like, first offense, first time being caught, doing you in school, and it's on your profile. That is harsh. I think my response to that, I mean, even as an educator, wow, that's, I know kids get in a jam, and they make a poor decision, and for them to have that kind of, like, on their profile because they made a bad decision, that is, that's harsh. I would say maybe re.
Well, I mean, this isn't what's going in the handbook, this is like.
Yeah, we'll take all this feedback, because I think we've had discussions about that. And what does that?
I mean, you want to make it, you want to make it zing so that you don't get a second offense, but at the same time, you don't want to, like, stuck with them forever. I don't, you know.
You could enter as a zero, so they get it redone, but I think the first time, you know, I know my experience when I do that with the kids, and then they usually, I usually don't come to that issue again, because they realize, oh crap, they're actually checking, or they're actually going to do this. Like, I would have hated that to go on some, personally, I don't know if I would have even did that, because that's a big.
But this is a starting one, right? Yeah, what's the best way to give you guys feedback on, on this as we read through?
I would say as you kind of process, then you ask questions, let us know, and then we can, we can take feedback to, to the teachers, because we'll send this out again once we get an idea. I mean, you know, first offense, if it's, if it's a detention, right? To me that, you know, now you have to do your assignment in a detention. It might be detention after school for an hour instead of a lunch detention. But I mean, there are things we can put in place that I think will help deter, kind of to Jessica's point. But I think the, the challenge is, is that if you've done it more than once, then it's, then it's, then it's something more, right? And that's what we're trying to figure out, is what's that balance?
Is this throughout their high school career?
See, I had to ask clarity. This is in one class.
Okay.
So I said, because a kid could violate all the way down to the third offense in one day.
I mean, make sure that's clear, right? Yeah, do exactly that.
One day of poor choices.
GPT got overlooked, that's.
Yeah.
So I, and I apologize, let me rephrase my question to you. Since this is a public meeting, and people are seeing this, and we'll see the recording, where should the public direct their feedback?
Mr. Beckel.
Mr. Beckel, okay, thank you. I just, my, my email, I'm sure we'd get, so I just want to direct it, right?
He's going to bring all the recommended changes to the secondary staff handbook.
I like.
You're never allowed a free reading book.
Yeah.
Yes. They get a free reading book if they're named in school suspension.
Yeah, we want them to be doing something.
Okay.
Yeah, so then also the one up above, right? I know that this was a question that even Jess and I had talked about, like, what, what does that look like? Do we, do we give assignments grades? And I know that's, that and the one that we'll come to next about the ABCD 4321, I think is kind of an ongoing discussion, because there's some philosophical challenges with that. And so one of the things that we're, we're going to offer is, if anybody on the board wants to come visit with that team and talk through what some of the recommended changes could possibly be, I think the team is open to that. We'd love to have you guys have a conversation about maybe what's being heard in the community that we're not hearing, and kind of take that on. But this was kind of the, the approach. I think the challenge I have is, there's never, there's never two classes that are the same. And so if I'm teaching a class, intense teaching a class, I'm hired as the professional to do that work, and I make my best judgment based on where I'm going, what my kids are doing, what their interests are, all the data that I have at my disposal. And we want to leave that autonomy in the teacher's hands. But on the same side, and I think this is kind of to the point that the community's coming back with, is we need to have some idea of what the, what the consistency is. Because if we're not articulating that from class to class, then that's on us, and we have to do a better job of that. But if I'm, if I'm looking at my class, I might not require assignments once a student has shown me that they can do it, right? So is there a set number? And that, that just depends so much. So I think that's why this one is a little bit trickier. But I think that the compromise that the teams came up with and the staff came up with are, well, you can be somebody that just says, well, you didn't do it, this is your grade. Or, you know what, you were, you were supposed to do this, this is going to impact your grade, and you now need to get it done before. And I think as long as the teacher has been explicit about that at the beginning of class, and has communicated that home as well, that's just kind of a compromise between the two. But again, that, that's open for feedback. This is not decided, this is just kind of their, their approach to that question, so that we could still leave the autonomy in the class, but maybe meet more of the needs that parents are expressing to board members, so.
So you want that feedback from us now, or you want?
No, I would say you can just email, unless you have feedback you want to share now.
No, I would just say I'd welcome the opportunity, if you're open to meet with the group, because I, I get that, you know, what you just explained absolutely. What I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around, though, is we, you know, this is a grade you get, you didn't turn it in, and that means no reassessments. That means no two-week, you know, period and things. So I just need to understand that happen. I think it'd be better to have a dialogue to kind of work back and forth through those things rather. So I very much welcome that opportunity. So, did I interrupt you?
Huh?
I didn't interrupt you?
No.
Okay.
No, that's just, it's not really the feedback I was giving or looking for in this, so I'll just email.
Yeah, I think we need to have continued iterations on this, and there's still more conversations around it, so. But I do appreciate the effort, and I appreciate the presentation back, and we'll continue to iterate.
We have two, what if, we have a meeting this next Thursday, and then we scheduled one for the Thursday after spring break, is that right?
Yes, it's like this.
So we would need, we would need the feedback to rewrite, if you have proposals for rewriting that you want the committee to consider, we would need that. I think you guys, we can't have more than two of you, right?
This Thursday or conference Thursday?
This Thursday, this Thursday, because we have conferences next week.
I'm available.
But then we have another one before the next board meeting. So there's at least two of you, or four of you can get to one of the meetings if possible, if you need to, or if you want to.
Who want to?
Those are at 3:30 on Thursday. So the dates are?
The 29th?
And March 21st. 21st.
I may email some stuff to be forwarded for this Thursdays to have it start being like that.
Yep, that'll work.
I think this is great, so thanks for all the work that's been done in the meetings, and I think it goes towards a lot of the accountability that we've talked about. So thanks for sharing this.
Okay, the other one that we have, and this one is a bigger, I think, conversation because of some of the, I think, lasting impact that this will have on students. And so with this, I provided a, a pretty extensive kind of discussion, so that you could go through it and understand where we're seeing some challenges. And I gave you an example, talked through what that example looked like, what a traditional grade would look like. And this has been something that we've shared in the past, but I just put it down again, and this time I just use an example from, from my teaching, and how this, how this might be a challenge. So in any class, you have a set number of standards. So let's say in my class, we have those five standards that'll be represented on an assignment. Previously, you might have gotten a B minus on that assignment, but you might not know what the student did for citing sources, or writing an explanatory text, producing clear writing, meaning task, purpose, and audience. You might not have the conventions, which are grammar and usage, and you might not use punctuation, capitalization. So when I would put a grade on a paper before, let's say it was a B minus, you really didn't know where in that category you were excelling, or where you were falling out, unless I made multiple comments. And I've been an English teacher for a lot of years, and there's lots of times a student would see a grade and then go in the basket regardless of how many comments I put on it. And that, that's a little bit challenging, because the whole process is learning and improving, not just end results. And so let's say that I have an assignment, those five things are on there. In a traditional system, that student would have got a B minus. Now we move to standards reference grading, so for each one of those, there is what we call a proficiency scale. And I just put that on here to show you, if it's citing strong, or citing strong and thorough textual evidence, meaning you're taking a topic and you're analyzing it, you're looking at other people, what they say, you're looking at reports, you're looking at sources of information that are knowledgeable in that area, that's what that standard is asking for. And you're citing it correctly in your paper, and you have a works cited page. Like, all of those go into what that standard is asking. So when I go to score that, now I can give students direct feedback based on this proficiency scale. And I know that there's been a lot of conversation about, well, there's not a four. And I would say, in the last three months, two to three months, there's been a ton of work done on creating that four. So about two weeks ago, the English teacher, so myself, Ms. Beldon and Ms. Donahue got together, and while we had an idea for fours in almost all of them, we went back and added a couple more based on the, the feedback from not only students, but also each other, to make those a little clearer. So now, as a student, if I give you a score on this standard, you can see, to get a three, this is what you need to do. To get a four, this is what you need to do. And so the idea is, it's more authentic feedback to the skills that students have or don't have. So that's what, that's what the proficiency scales are. We are talking currently about how do we get these proficiency scales on the website, so parents can see them. So if you're asking, what's a three, what's a four, you'll be able to see this. I think elementary is done with all the content areas?
Really close.
Really close, and I think most of the high school core content areas are close. The problem with some of our singletons, and I'll use Mr. Warrington as an example, he might have seven different preps. And so he's got some of his classes done, but he's finishing up. I mean, he's got proficiency scales for all of them, he's just refining them as we go. And so.
And some teachers are handing them out as a paper, some are not.
Correct.
And I think that's confusing to some of the students, because they want to see the paper.
Or they use a rubric, which is a student-friendly version of this. It just depends on what they think is best for their kids, but it is confusing. And so that's what we're trying to figure out, how to get this information. So if a parent says, well, what is this citing sources? You know, Jamie Lee, whose son is in my class, can pull this up and see what we're talking about. So there's a direct connect between the score they're getting and what the, what the document is I'm using.
Because I know that's, that's what a comment that I heard specifically from a student, you know, that they get this in government, they get it in personal finance, but they don't get it in any other class, so they're confused, you know, where do we get this? They might show it one time on the screen, but yet they don't have the paper. So maybe just to start with, paper's better for now.
Right, and we can tell that back to the teachers, just because that's good feedback. So that's.
Hold it, Dan, have it.
I do have a question. So when you started that, you said that you wanted to do this to stop some kids from just picking their paper up, looking in the basket, looking at a ABCD, and tossing it back in after they see what they got. Well, how is an ABCD any different than a 4321? Like, I see I got a three, I'm like, meh, and toss it back in the basket.
Right, but now you know you got a three on work, on citing sources. You know, you got a two on punctuation, so you've got to figure out how to punctuate your sentences. You've got a three on usage. So it breaks down what, where your skill sets are. And also, from my perspective as a teacher, if I've got three or four kids that aren't work citing, aren't citing their sources correctly, now I know specifically which three or four I need to pull up and talk to about that. For my end, it gives me more direct feedback on the skills that some students might be struggling with or don't have comprehend at all.
It's not going to necessarily motivate them to do it, but it's going to give them more pinpoint.
I was just going where we started the conversation.
Yeah, it gives it some more authentic feedback, so, go ahead.
And on that, I, so I remember when you and I were talking, when we came to an epiphany about your ABCD when you're in high school versus mine. Hey, it's important to share the context I didn't have. Are you getting into that?
We're getting that, yeah. Just another minute. So I just, I just pulled up another proficiency scale so you could see, because a lot of people say, how do you, how do you have a proficiency scale for punctuation, or capitalization, or spelling? How do you get a four? So I just wanted you to see what that can look like. So I put two samples in there, and this, this is all going to be available to all of our community members as well. So here's where we get to a little bit of the challenge. The recommendation the committee is being asked to consider is the score on the left, which is where that 4321 is over here, as we understand it. And the question is, can we just change that to an ABCD? So if you are at a score of four, you get an A, at a score of three, you would get a B, at a score of two, you would get a C, at a score of one, you would get a D, and obviously a zero and a F. And in theory, you would think that that would easily translate. And as Mr. Gibson alluded, when I think about, when I was in school, and this was a few years ago, when I was in school, a C meant you were doing average work. You were a 10th grader, and you were doing what 10th graders were supposed to be doing, right? Like, that was average. According to our committee, and right or wrong, it's just different, if you're doing what you're expected to do towards that standard, towards that level three, that's an A minus. Okay, that's a pretty big philosophical difference, right? Doing your work, that's average, that's a C, versus doing your work, meeting the requirements, that's an A minus. And so just changing this begs those questions, begs those discussions. I'm not sold that an average is a C. I can, I mean, that can be changed for me. I don't know that our whole committee is convinced that an A minus is doing work at grade level. And so we're trying to figure out what that compromise looks like. I think the challenge we have is, is if you move, this is where we're talking about, the scale scores on the left, that 43210. Right now, it converts, so if you get a four, you get an A. If you get a three, you get an A minus. If we change that three to a B, which, I mean, we can, we can come to that resolution, it's going to bring some of our GPAs down, because that's not how it's been done in the past here. Not saying it's right or wrong, but that's going to be something that we have to have the conversation around. I know that there's been discussions about our honor roll, and so many people on the honor roll. Well, what our honor roll right now represents is how many kids are working at grade level. Well, most of them should be there, and if they're not, we should be providing them supports. But if they're, if we're going to change this, then we have, and one of the things I think the committee came up with is, we have to change the honor roll anyway, right? Because we don't think it reflects of high honors, or whatever it was maybe deemed to be at the beginning. But that's going to cause GPA. So if you imagine an A minus right now converts to a 92 when it calculates your GPA, and now it converts to an 85, that's going to make a significant difference in, in your GPA.
Yeah, can I pause? I'm sorry, I'm going to divide by zero error on this right here. So we're saying if they're developed, if they're operating at grade level, the committee's saying they should be at a four if they're.
No, if they're at grade level, they're at an A minus, they're a three. That's proficient. Proficient at grade level.
Proficient is at grade level, okay.
Correct. And that's what the A minus is right now.
Okay, that's, that's an, that's an A minus.
Right.
I guess, when you look at, when you look at, I guess, the FAST data, you referenced that. So we have, we, and I, and I can't remember what it was, I'd have to pull up your report, but I think it was. I think it was significant, like in the math, a 40% or so not at, at level, right?
I don't remember specifically what that sounds about, right?
Yeah, 40%, not proficient, but then, when you factor in, like you said, the honor roll, we're saying on the honor roll, we have majority of the kids, I don't know what the percentage is, but it was a big, so the honor roll's saying, we are, because presumably, those people have threes and fours, so those kids have threes and fours, that's how they got on the honor roll.
Right.
I can help with that, Nathan, there was 82% of our kids were on the honor roll, 221 out of 269 high school students. As a parent, a teacher, a community member, I was not impressed with that, that concerned me, that, especially when I looked and saw that 51, 43, 49% are not proficient in math, 33, 35, 59% are not proficient in reading, how are that many kids on the honor roll?
Can I just, I want to just draw on real quick, if that's okay?
Within high school, I should say.
Yeah, that's high school.
No, I'm within.
Okay.
I'm just going to go back to apples and oranges for just a second, so you've got to be careful, because what I'm suggesting, if you remember back to the FAST data I showed you, just a minute.
Yep.
Okay, we talked about words per minute with accuracy, right, that's like the one we're putting a lot of our eggs in that basket, right? You've got to remember that the grades that are being distributed on the honor roll, and over here, those are standards reference grades, and that FAST data is related to automaticity, it's related to, it's not, it's two, you're two very separate things. Now, if you talk about more like the ISAS, you could start maybe drawing some parallels between those two things, but to me, the screening data of the FAST and standard reference grading that's going to occur in a classroom are so far removed, it's hard to, it's hard for me to bring up parallel to that, so.
Okay. And I'll chime in here, where I finish my question, there's, I don't know if you guys remember the first board meeting, when you're bringing up reports, I mentioned, there's so many different reports that present certain things, and I don't know what's important and what's not, and it sounds like, depends if then, but, the context of the report and everything, so, having that kind of laid out, you know, at least for me, it's going to help me digest, use this report and this context for this purpose, use this report for this in context. I am saying, I, for this, I just want to make sure, for where I'm at, is make sure we're not lowering the bar, we're not watering it, watering it down, and I don't know if I know that yet, I want to feel comfortable that we're not, that's where I'm at, I just want to make sure we're not watering it down and lowering the bar and make it easier. We want to make it a challenge to earn that, so, sorry.
No, you're good, and I mean, those FASTs and all that stuff, we've used that too, and it does help you get an idea of where your kids are at, though, it helps you to prepare for the ISAS, it helps you prepare what they need, help in, are they proficient in math, are they not proficient, so...
Skills, those kinds of...
Yeah, so if they're not proficient, not able to read at grade level, I don't, in one test, in the other test, I imagine reflects the same, so how are you on the honor roll and you're not reading at grade level?
We're trying to bring cookies and pizza, trying to work on motivation a little bit.
Apple juices and stuff, yeah.
What did they think that is?
I think the challenge is, is that with any data point, I can tell you what it reads and how it works for us, right, and you're going to be able to find a reason why it works against us, that's just the way data works, it's a set point in time, one piece, and so, I think the challenge is, and I would say the feedback from the committee is, we came up with a list of kind of the pros and cons of both the 4, 3, 2, 1, and the A, B, C, D, F, because I do think this is a legitimate question, like, I think it would be a tremendous help for our parents to have an A, B, C, D, F. The challenge is, it's not the same A, B, C, D, F that they're thinking it was in traditional grading, and so, that, even though it'll say a B, are we saying that that's proficient and we're okay with that, because we do have to make that conversion then to what it becomes in their GPA, and that's where we're, that's where we're having kind of that stick or that rub, because I'm fine with it being an 85, let's say, but Adam's convinced it needs to be a 92. That's a pretty significant philosophical difference, and so, that's what we're trying to get to an understanding of. If we change it to an A, B, C, D, F, in my opinion, and this is strictly my opinion, it's a symbol, the four and A, it's a symbol. What it converts to is really where the rub hits, right? So, if we think it's easier for parents to see an A, B, C, D, F, like a B, three, you're almost there, but it still converts to a 92, that's going to cause a headache for parents as well, because they're used to it being between an 80 and a 90. So, whichever one we go with, we just have to make sure we're communicating what that is, and clearly, so, one of the things that I wanted you to do is kind of spend some time looking at these, because I think our team really did try and think, how would it help to have an A, B, C, D, how would it hurt, how would it help to have a 4, 3, 2, 1, how would it hurt? And overwhelming, the feedback is, we are in month five of implementation, never do you implement something like this and evaluate it right now and say, oh, yeah, this is good or this is bad. I mean, usually, an implementation takes two to three years. That's just based on lots of data that says, if you're going to do something effectively, you need to make sure you have time to do it. And so, I think the feedback from the committee is, we need to have time to make sure we're doing this, not that we're not considering it, and not that we can't change it in June when the time comes, but we want to make sure we're doing it and that we, we're on the path that makes sense for parents, makes sense for what the committee's doing, makes sense for giving feedback to students. And so, I just wanted to make sure you guys saw this, because I know this is a big conversation, but I wanted you to see kind of where some of the conversation is, if we do this, here are the pitfalls, if we do this, here are the positives, just so you can see where we're coming from. So, I would ask that you add to this list, so that our committee can look at it, and I just ask that you use a different color, so maybe add school board in red, so that when we bring this back to the committee, they can look at, oh, we didn't even think about that, right? Or if a parent looks at it and gives you feedback, put it on there, so we can say, oh, yeah, we haven't even considered that, because that's really what it's about. This is about feedback for parents and for students, and if we're not, we're not hitting that using the 4, 3, 2, 1, then we need to figure that piece out. But we also know that we're seeing less and less questions at the high school level from parents, and so, if they're still coming to you, we need you to send them our way, because we're, I talked to almost every high school staff member, and not one person has had feedback from a parent since report cards went out. So, if you're still getting feedback on this, please put the information in there, but also encourage them to call Mr. Beckel, or Ms. Whitson, or Mrs. Woods, so that they, I mean, they can call me as well, but we wanted to at least get a starting point, so you guys could see what the conversation is centered around, and then you guys can put the feedback in that maybe we're not considering, so that as we get ready to make a recommendation for this, or change this process, if we didn't, that's what direction we need to move, that we've considered those things that maybe we're not hearing.
And there's a disclaimer on there, that some things might fit in a different column, depending on who's writing or reading it, you know?
Right, right.
Thank you for pulling this together. I do want to address, I think, one thing to give you, I guess, that feedback from the other side is, I think where you said, never to be changed something in the middle of implementation, right, we're, you know, five months into...
I don't think we evaluate it, I think we monitor it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the general perspective or feedback is, this has, while planned, is kind of figuring things out while we're going, and not necessarily, like, you do have a foundational plan, but not everything was really thought out, and for parents, it feels like an experimentation on the kids who have four short years here, right? So, it's just this feeling of, yes, we know you're working through it, the evaluation is because there are things that, you know, weren't necessarily communicated, or, on the other side, people weren't listening, they didn't show up at meetings, I get that, but also, there were some changes that we needed to make along the way, and for them, it's that feeling of, you know, wow, this just feels like it wasn't completely thought out before we started executing, so, that's just the other side of it, and we'll work through this, but I just wanted you to be aware, it's not necessarily evaluation, it's taking the feedback from the people as we're using it and figuring out how to make it better, how to address those things, so...
And I think the committee and the administrative team has been very receptive to that, and I think when we, when you had that same concern, we had people come to the board meeting, and the concern was, I don't want this to affect my students' GPA, so we put a two-week window in, where a student got their score, and then we're like, oh, I, this isn't reflective of what, either I want it to be, what my parents want it to be, what I actually know, and so, I think we had a handful of students that used that two-week window, and it was a nice add, because we're about learning, right?
Yep.
Like, it's continual process, so, that's something that we will probably do every year, just because it's a good practice.
Yeah, I know.
And so, that stuff does happen, and so, I think the conversation is, I don't think there's anybody on the administrative team or on the committee that isn't receptive to hearing feedback, but there's also kind of a push, it seems, that we have to change it now, when we haven't even given it a chance to work, and that's where I think we have some challenges, because this isn't like, we just put this in place in August, we had a pilot group doing this for two years. The conversion from A to, or, I'm sorry, from a three to a 92.7, or nine, or whatever it is, is something I've been using in my English class for two years, that's not new, and all of our teachers that have been teaching English have been using that same formula, that same conversion, so it's not like it was just this, it's just now everybody's using it. And so, I think that there's this misconception that we didn't have this thought out, when we, when we have, kind of extensively gone through this and worked through the process. I would say there's people that don't agree, and I'm completely fine with that, but I think that there's, there's a little bit more to this than maybe the community in general understands, and that's on us, if we didn't communicate that clearly, then that's on us, and we take responsibility. So, we're trying to get those questions answered, we're trying to get consistency in teachers, to make sure if there's a confusion with some of them, that we've taken care of that, and that's been very deliberate, so, that's just the process, but I appreciate the feedback, yes. Okay, so that, again, you have access to, so please add that, maybe in pink on that chart at the bottom, if you would, so we can move that conversation forward. The next one, any other questions about the standards reference grading, or anything else you want the committee to dig into, that's not already mentioned, at least those initial conversations?
For me, I can follow up offline.
Okay.
I'll follow up as well.
Leadership conference, Natasha and I went last week, two weeks ago, whenever we were gone, and the conference is about equity, inclusion, standards, making sure we're teaching and using resources for kids, making sure we're teaching them at grade level. There are some statistics that come out of this information that are just shocking. The number of people who think they're teaching at grade level and the actual grade level work is night and day difference, and so, being intentional about the text that we're giving kids and saying, this is a grade level text, meaning maybe the lexile level matches up, a lot of times, we think we have to meet kids where they are, which, there's truth to that, but we also have to have an expectation that you're going to be here at grade level, and if we do that and pull you up, that's different than bringing everything down. And so, just how are we shifting those conversations? So, that was a really, it was an intense conference, they keep you busy the whole time, but a lot of good ideas came from that that we'll share with the administrative team. The gala event, we had on Friday night, or Saturday night, I did nothing with it, but I see Kelsey Ritchie back there. The committee, the foundation board, not only do they read through all the applications for people who are putting in requests for that money and make decisions around that, but they're also generating ways to make that money. And last year was our first gala, and I think it was very well received, and this year, we had 100 more participants at the gala, and more sponsorship, and it was just a truly enjoyable celebration of what the best things are about I-35, our community, our staff, our kids, and whenever that's at the forefront, I don't know how you can go wrong. So, it was just, I think, a great time was had by all, I've seen several pictures posted of fun times, and it was just, I think, a great event. So, I wanted to thank the foundation first, because this was an idea that was brought in like 2018, 19, when I first came, I'd been in a different district that had an amazing foundation, so we took on the task of building that, and it's amazing, I think, last year they raised $12,000, they had a slightly higher goal this year, so hopefully, they'll meet it, and I'll give you an update when we get that information in, but just a really great celebration of our schools and community, so, job well done, guys. And I was asked, just to give a legal update, there was a lawsuit against the district and myself, and that has been dismissed as of now, it was dismissed without prejudice, which means it can be brought back, obviously, there's a statute of limitations on all of that, but as of right now, those have all been dismissed, so, I wanted to give you guys an update, I know people in the community sometimes ask about that, so, wanted to give an update on that.
I thought about clapping. Usually, people get mad at people about clapping, don't they?
Yeah.
All right.
That's all I have, unless you have other questions, and I did make notes, and like I said, the feedback from you guys is imperative as we do this work, so...
All right. Thank you, Dr. Van Leer. All right, next on the agenda, we have discussed and approved the consent items, they are in action, so we'll fire a motion and a vote, so, we have the, I'm going to go through each of them.
Can I give you just a bit of feedback on this?
Yes.
So, Hannah Bedwell is hired as the high school ag teacher, she is also the FFA sponsor, we just haven't solidified that contract, so once that part of her contract is solidified, we'll bring that back, but she is hired as both, I just want to make sure there wasn't any confusion, because we're still working on what that looks like.
Okay, gotcha, all right, thank you. All right, so, I'll kind of read through these, and we can stop and discuss if you have anything. So, the past meeting minutes, which everyone should have got a copy of, monthly bills and financial statements, which are in front of you for reading, resignations and contracts, Christine Beathard resigns as an associate, Randy Moe-Lamp resigns from all positions at I-35, Hannah Bedwell hired as a high school agriculture teacher, Chris Solak resigns as preschool associate, Holly Finley resigns as full-time associate. There's one open enrollment, I think, on that sheet you guys had access to, bus 15 engine repairs, we're approving repairs of bus 15 by Hugland, replacement parts come with a one-year warranty. We have the cooperative with you and I, I believe this is what Ms. Woods talked with us about, so, we'll continue going through there. Work-based learning sharing agreement, we're expanding our program, we're developing regional coordination of services, we currently share with Winterset, Winterset wants to increase to do two days, we're also partnering with Clark, Murray, and East Union, and I do have a question on that one, but we'll come back to it during the discussion. And then, AIA purchasing agreement, the district agrees to purchase 60% of its food from the distributor at reduced cost, distributor agrees to provide product data information, establish bi-weekly, salesperson visits and truck deliveries established in conjunction with AIA purchasing food shows and seminars, provide monthly, weekly price reports, invoice directly, deliver products, and provide computer ordering inventory support system. So, that is what's on the consent items, is there any discussion?
I wanted to ask about the bus 15 engine repairs, because at the top, it says 2013-14, is that when the bus was purchased?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, that's our, that's one of our big activity buses, so it has, I think, 70, 72,000 miles on it. One of the, one of the challenges we're having with some of our other buses is the bodies are having some issues, and this body is in really good shape, so, Joel from Southeast Warren, who is a lead mechanic and who serves our buses, says that he anticipates if we make this repair to the engine, it could last us seven or eight more years, so...
My question on the work-based learning, so I was reading through this, you know, contract, I guess, that we share, is this a staff member that we have, oh...
I had questions on that too, so go ahead.
Okay. Is this a staff member on our staff that we're sharing, or is this a...
Yes.
Okay, it didn't read quite clear with that, so, it said, we're going to pay Clark, if I was reading, and I thought it was our staff, but when I was reading through it, and I for sure, it said, we were going to pay, yeah, right there, number six, I-35 School District shall provide Clark, Murray, and Winterset with a statement for reimbursement due on a semi annual basis, so, that's for them to pay us.
Yeah, we'll just build them, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and the days in there might get changed a little bit, because we have to verify with Winterset, I just wanted you guys to be aware of this, because once we, once we approve this, so, the only change would be, and I'm going to ask that you consider approving it, given one of two scenarios, Winterset might only use one day instead of two, they asked for two, their principal asked for two, their board's not sure yet, so that'll just come down to what they can approve, we'll pick up the other day, because we have plenty of kids that are, that are wanting to participate in this program, so, that's, it's not an issue.
Working program with the community, and they have...
Yes, yes, businesses, yeah, and so, the reason why regional makes sense is... And so the reason why regional makes sense is because, you know, if there's an accountant in Osceola and a kid in Winterset that wants to be an accountant, then they might be able to just go to Osceola and do that for the work base. Or, you know, they might go to a lawyer in Winterset if it's somebody at I-35 who might want to do that. So because of the nature of us being spread out rural, we wanted to consolidate some of the business opportunities, so it's maybe easier for one person to go talk to the business for five schools as opposed, and make a match with a kiddo or four kiddo as opposed to having one person in each community trying to go out and do that.
And what's the endorsement you have to have for this type of thing?
Yeah, so they, that's, that's one of those tricky ones. This is, this was brought up last year as, as a challenge. The work, so the governor's office and the Department of Ed put out that you can have a work-based learning certificate and do this work. They hadn't designed it, they hadn't had a plan for it, but it said in there that you, you could have this certificate. So that's what we were waiting for last year. Started working in August and September because we had a person that was interested and is a good fit for it. And so finally, we were told by March, it'll be there. So in March, it was there, and then in April, our employee was done with all the work that was required. So we were just waiting for the state to publish what, what could be used. So there is an endorsement track, but there's also a certificate track. So I think that's why it's sometimes confusing because most of the time, it's an endorsement.
Okay. So we have our staff members on the certificate track or the endorsement?
They're, they're already, they're already certified.
Certified, but not, don't have the endorsement, but you don't need the endorsement.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that, that's part of the, that's part of the bet.
And you have coordinated with your two peers on the other school district side to make sure they're in alignment with the same perspective on this?
Say that again?
So the superintendents of Winterset and Clark County. You've spoken with them and made sure that they are in the same alignment, that certificate's okay, that they don't.
We house the, we house the program, so it's on us to have it. So she only gets recorded on our beds as, as the employee. And so I think if you remember, in October, we have to submit a beds report for who all of our teachers are and what they teach, and if they don't have the proper endorsement, they get flagged. And we can't submit it until all those flags are removed. And so because she has a certificate, that's been removed, it's not an issue. She's licensed to do what she needs to do.
Okay.
Is that open enrollment now or for next school year?
I don't remember what that one is. Usually, I think it might be now.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. I'd have to go back and look at the form.
Is the work-based learning coordinator shared with these districts?
Currently, we share with Winterset, but we're adding Osceola.
Okay, it wasn't originally.
No.
Okay.
And we're adding Murray and possibly East Union, but they have somebody, so it'd be more collaboration. East Union and Murray share a superintendent, and so they, I don't know how they're going to divide that person's time, but they will figure that piece out. We just know, because this is an operational sharing program, so I don't know if we use it for operational sharing because I think we're already in capacity, but maybe not.
We have used it.
We have used it. So we get the two student funding for this to offset the costs.
Which is $15,000.
Yeah. So it actually pays for itself for us, so.
Who's doing the work on the bus?
Hovland.
Is that the person that we?
It's the company. Hovland Bus Company. Yeah, Hovland Bus Company.
The company.
Have they had a Marshalltown?
Yeah, I think Marshalltown. I think there's another, I want to say there's another provider or another service group in the Quad Cities, but, but Joel was, we do all of our work almost all through Hovland. So.
No, I was just looking at the quote and everything else, and you and I had looked at it once before, and I mean, everything for an in frame overhaul, the national average is 45 to 50 hours to do an overhaul on an in frame overhaul. I just was looking at the $1,000 they charged us to diagnose it. Seven and a half hours it took them to. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on the consent items? Not. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent items. All motion to approve consent items. All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Roll now, all those, and then properly moved and seconded all of them. Aye? Opposed?
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. All right, next, we'll move on to the items for discussion. We have a wellness committee update from Ms. Stroh.
They have an inspection.
Which would you like to go to first?
What?
Which would you like to go to first?
Oh, mine. Well, you can go to the progress report. Okay. So I won't, I won't speak too long because I'm not going to get way into this. The wellness policy, it focuses on students here, and the state mandates that we do have a wellness policy committee. So what it is, is it's more of a document that guides an agency to the health and wellbeing of students. So with all that, there's criteria here, there's criteria here. With our committees, there's criteria on who's on our committee, and I know we can laugh and giggle, there's criteria for criteria, and it goes from there to there. Anyways, it's, it's a nice committee. It is enjoyable. Sometimes it gets a little lengthy and, oh my gosh, we really have to go through all this. But, but we do, and it's through the long run, it actually is good. So when you look at all this, you're looking at it going, oh my, my gosh. So in a short version, what we do is we just document activities from teachers. We document it from staff. I document what I sell to your kids. Or is it smart snack approved? Has it gone through my calculator? I could say what your kids buy, but it's actually what you're buying. I will say that. But there's criteria I have to do. So we've got a lot of like clinics, a lot of cool things going on. And so what, this is like a work in progress. It's changing all the time as people say, hey, we have this. We have this club going on, we have this activity. I document it, the state looks at it and goes, this is awesome, this is cool. Is it fully in progress? Is it partially in progress? Is it not in, in place at all? So we just have like standards. We go through, we change it, and so we meet, we try to meet once a year. Every three years, we go through and we update everything. So this is our triennial assessment. So this is what we did this year. We kind of went through, asked for changes, changed names, teachers' names changed, people, clubs may come and go, some things aren't in place anymore. So through it all, we watch, I have to watch what I serve the kids. Smart snacks are huge. That's something when we have our administrative review next year, I have to show all of my documentation. Everything they buy, I have to show documentation on. So I can't sell them anything unless it is totally approved, which gets a little boring sometimes, so we have to try to find some fun things that they like. Kudos. So here, here's something that we do on our wellness. We try to get teachers, administration involved. Danielle, I'm going to use you, I gave her some kudos. The I-35 beep store, I would say two, three years ago before Danielle, it was all suckers, gum, taffy. And I'm not saying that's not fun because it is fun, and I like all that stuff. However, what the state would like to see is a progress towards pencils, fun things, class, class parties. She has brought in smart snacks that are approved, their whole brain, I know, but they are good. And so we found some fun things, and she has implemented that, and we thank her for that because it shows that we're trying and we're progressing. So that was huge. So that's just an idea of showing you, this is how we are working together. She's implementing, she's helping us, and it's huge because it's hard. Classroom parties. Thank the Lord, those are exempt. How boring would that be? Sorry. But things like that, that we work together. And so through our meetings, we just kind of go through, we all kind of throw in our opinions, what's going on, what do you think? And then we document, we have to show documentation. I throw out the minutes, like who was there, who wasn't there, and we kind of go from there. It's kind of cool. It's kind of cool. I know it's kind of a long, and I'm not going to go over everything, but the progress report in itself changes a lot, and I like that because you might have a jump rope clinic, you might have, we have cheer clinics, dance clinics, we have walking clinics.
Sorry, that Girls on the Run, I saw they added that.
Girls on the Run. There's a health awareness day. Now, I know that's preschool through 12, but I think that's every other year, every other year. And it's pretty cool what they do. It's the wellbeing, mental health. I actually think it's very cool how they have that going, so that's pretty cool. But there's a lot going on in it, but I'm not going to go over all of it. But that's kind of what it is. But what we do is we go over some of the student policies. Some of them, you kind of go, okay, what do we have to change? Is everything okay? Well, we did make a little change. Moreover, we had to look what the state says we can and can't do. We can serve lunch at a certain time, but not before a certain time. So what you see in there is a change, it's just something that you need to see as a reading, and we'll take action, what at the third reading? Yeah, so.
No, this was nice to see. I don't think I've seen this since we've been on the board, a breakdown of this detail, so.
Yeah, it is a lot of work, but it's, I like, I like to have you guys be able to see it so you know, we really go through and ask a lot of questions and bring PE teachers, staff, teachers, principals, admin, everybody.
Yeah.
I do have a greater appreciation for the role you play and your team plays for this school. You know, some people just think you might, you know, be the ones that show up and are cooking the food, and the kids walk the line, you give it to them. But understanding the thought processes, the analytics that, that you put in behind this was eye-opening, you know, for me, not just on this, but through our conversations and stuff. So thank you for doing all that you do.
Thank you.
Your staff, so.
But we love them, so we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Algy.
Thanks. All right. Next, we have the future-ready district data summary.
And I'm going to have Mr. Becco break this down.
I didn't see a name on that one.
Yeah, no, I'm going to have him write this down for the next board report, but it is something that is out now to community, and so I wanted to make sure you were aware of this. We will add this to our website. This looks at comprehensively, how are our students doing, and are they ready for the future, right? Future-ready. And I think one of the things to note on this is the, the kind of tick marks, so like on that 86% for the very far left where it says preschool participation, the tick mark there with the black dot is where the state averages. And so you can see where we are compared to the state in a lot of areas. We're, we're at state or above, and this would have been last year's data. And so you can see, I did put both last year's, so this is 2022, and this is 2023. I just put the front side as a synopsis, and then the third page is what all those things mean. So kind of like what you were saying, Nathan, about having a request. But I, I mean, I can go through all of these. It's, I'm going to tell you that sometimes it just gets easier the more you look at them, the more you see them, and the more we talk about them. I think, you know, you guys could say, yeah, that's, that's true, the more I hear about it, the, the more knowledge I have. But I wanted to include that, what they call the dictionary for you. But in every category, from last year to this year, we increased about getting our kids ready for, for the future. And I think that's always worth celebrating, but we will break this down in more detail and bring you kind of a more specialized look at it, but I wanted you to have it because it is out. And if community members ask, you can say, oh yeah, we've got great things going on, here's, here's what our data's showing us. So just another data point, but this is one that's provided by the AEA, and it's really looking at, are our kids ready for whatever's next? So.
I was reading through this, and these numbers are, you know, fantastic. I think this tying this back to the Ms. Woods conversation we're having earlier on, that's where I was getting the divide by zero error between the fast data and the lead, right? One's showing 40% not proficient, this one's showing 72% proficient. So like, I just need to learn the context of these.
A lot of different great tools.
I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that we're not, that, that we're using the right data to drive accountability, to drive raising the bar, not lowering the bar. And I don't want to set a, a false sense of, you know, achievement.
Things are great or things are awful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because you can't do, you can easily do that with one data point. And so collectively, we have to look at them all, right? And that's what, you know, and I think to your point, understanding what their purpose is helps with that significantly. Because I know that Danielle says, we don't really look at automaticity, right, for math? That was the example.
For that particular test.
For that particular test, they don't look at automaticity. But I will tell you, our fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade teachers, it's how fast can you do something, right? How fast do you?
Okay, okay.
And I will tell you that our, our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math teachers would like automaticity to be faster because if you're trying to do a multi-step problem and you can't do multiplication at a fast level, it slows you down to do the work then. So even though Mrs. Woods doesn't look at that, those fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade math teachers are clamoring, we got to be better at this, right? So if, they serve multiple purposes, and depending on your lens.
Yeah.
So all of that goes into the big picture, and we'll just, we can, we can do more work sessions on something like that. But again, I think it's just going to be putting it in front of you often to understand what they are. And I will make, I put a note to make a cheat sheet.
Thank you.
So I will get that to you guys, but that's a good question and a, and a good observation.
Next, we have the board policy review for the 500 series policies, but we also have a little bit unique situation. I'm going to do my best to try and do this, and you can correct me.
Yes.
I'll let my peers know. So our policies are driven, it's not like we sit and like write all of these up. The, I think the IASB was what we used for a while. They gave us recommendations, and then the, I'm sorry, Rural School Association of Iowa. And policies need to be updated, laws change and things, and we take that input from them when a new law changes or something to, to update our corresponding policies. That necessarily hasn't been kept up in the last couple of years for various reasons, so we're, we're playing catch-up on a lot. Normally, we would just review one series each year, but we're having to update a lot of the, the policies to basically bring them up to baseline over things we've missed. And it is a ton of reading. Dr. Dettlinger took time to work on all the deltas, and she shared them with us this week. While we transparent, I've only got through like 50% of them. If that, I'm, I'm going to be reading through every single one of these. There's already some things that I think we might need to have discussions on. You guys are welcome to read them. It's a lot. I, I will definitely be reading them and try and give you feedback if you have questions for me on each one of them. But that's where we're at. This is the first reading. It's not approved after this reading. There's three readings we'll have to go through, and we can make changes all the way up to the day that we approve the third readings. We can motion changes that day, so we have several opportunities to make changes. Does the community get to see, will these be published for the community?
Yeah, we can.
Will you read through these two? The proposed changes?
Yeah, put them on there.
Okay. So that's what's going on with the policy changes. So.
And then just as, for you guys, as a, I mean, it is, it does seem overwhelming, the recommended page, policy recommendations, is kind of a cheat sheet. It should list the policy and kind of what the change was or why the change is happening. But then when you actually go to the policy, it's in the red line version, so really, you can kind of just scroll to the policy that's got the red, and then the change is there. This is, so all of our forms are on here that we use, so all of that information's on there. So some of them, like here, you know, I formatted something, right, that, that's not a big change, but I, I wanted to put it in there because when I accept all these changes, it's going to change it. But we have an anti-bullying harassment policy. They wanted us to move it to the 104 section because it encompasses our whole system, not just students. And so I just copied and pasted it here. But you can see it's redlined here. So that's, that's kind of how I, that's what that other document is with the 100, 200. A lot of these are formatting because unfortunately, nothing just converts and reads like it should. So I have to go in and do a lot of formatting things, but you can see that all up onto the right. So all the changes are there in a redline version as well. So just wanted to show you what those two different documents are.
So again, this does require an action, so a, a motion and a, and a second and a vote. With that stated, there'll be two more of these. I'm, even, even though I know I wanna see changes in these further finalized, I'm okay, you know, for me voting today on this because I know we're gonna have two more opportunities to, to, to change some of the language. So that's just where I sit personally. Wanted you guys to be aware of that, so. So with that, I will, is there any other discussions on policies? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the policy series.
I will motion to approve the first reading of the policy.
It's been properly, motion, uh, second.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right. Been looking forward to this next one all night because it's starting to get hot in here, AC heat bid. I did not get to see these. For some reason, I didn't have access at the time. But are, can somebody give me an update on what, what the plan was? I know we tabled this one at the last board meeting.
So we did table at the last board meeting. Sharon, I was under the impression, you and I talked about this, because we thought they were gonna come back in around 80, 86. This is only for two rooms, not four like the one before. So really, all they did was cut the amount of units that we're gonna do in half for paying the same amount of money.
Yeah, and I know, have you talked to Bryce about that?
I have not, no.
Yeah, I, that might just be a typo. I honestly didn't even see that until you just mentioned it, so let me verify.
So what I'd like to do with this one, I'm actually gonna motion that we table this one, and till we get like a clar, like clarification. Because to me, what they did was they just.
Yeah, and I don't think.
It was half the units, it was half the.
Or do we approve it conditionally based off the wording getting updated? So that way, it doesn't have to come back.
You can approve it if it's based on four rooms, and if it's not, then we can just table it.
I'm act, yeah, if it's on four rooms, I would motion that we approve. But so reading this, like it's, it is more than one spot that they.
Yeah, and I just wonder if they, I, I just wonder if he didn't change the number and not the number of rooms, like the total amount, he's the same bid.
Cause yeah, cause what he did here is like, he even called out the rooms. He didn't even, he didn't say how many units. He said how many units, and then called out the rooms he's doing this time.
Okay, let me, let me, why don't we just table it? I think that'll be easier.
I think that'll be easier.
And then I might just see if you guys have time to do a quick meeting in the next week or two to approve this so that he can be ready to go and get stuff ordered.
Do an emergency meeting and approve it?
Well, just a, I mean, a.
24 hours.
A lunch meeting or something, yeah. And this would be, would be on the agenda.
Okay, good. Sorry, I'm really.
Maybe we could put it in.
Really wanna get this AC.
While, while we're, while we're at that one, if you'd like to, like, I can jump three items down or what have you, and I want that on there also. The roof?
Well, hold on, these are individual actions, so we're just deciding that to action.
We can add it to that meeting.
Okay. Well, let's get down to that.
Yeah, let's table that one.
So for now, we're just not taking action. There's nothing we need to do. Just move on, so it's tabled, yeah. All right. Next, we have bids for phase one of the fields, concession, and parking. Who's gonna talk about that?
Garrett?
Do you want me to talk again?
Yes.
Garrett.
Yeah, Garrett, okay.
That's what we're paying for.
Yeah. There we go.
Give you an update. Hopefully, you guys have all seen the, the bid tab and overall budget summary, but we did have good turnout on bid day. We got, we got competitive numbers. One bid package had two bidders, everything else had three, four, or five. So it was really good turnout. And we got, we got good bids. They came in under budget. For the base bid, we got two alternates. Need you guys to look at two. Alternate one was extending the parking lot. The base bid had, I believe, 81 stalls. The alternate would increase that to 136, I think. So that's a, that's a pretty competitive price they gave you for that alternate. Then alternate two is a batting cage. It would double your batting cages. You'd have two in each field. Right now, base bid has one. Alternate two would add a second one on the outside of the first one. It'd be, it'd be concrete, turf, cage, all of that, just, so you'd have two batting cages at each field, so. I, if you have any questions, please sit back and answer them otherwise.
So my question's on, when we go to action on this, it's gonna, I assume, have to be worded in such a way that I approve bid with alternate one, or I approve bid with alternate one and alternate two, or I approve just the bid?
Right.
Okay.
I can run the motion.
Okay, you're gonna do, okay, thank you. Any other discussion from?
That was six over six on the parking lot, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, six over six, yeah.
All right, so to clarify, six inches of rock with six inches of concrete over it.
Okay, thank you.
In my opinion, with the alternate, where it came in, I think it's what, 147,000 or something?
Alternate one.
Alternate one. I would definitely motion that we would do that along with this because we're never gonna get that amount of parking space for that price again.
Will that hold the tractors and more tractors?
It'll hold lots of tractors.
Okay, thank you.
Lots of tractors. And then again, on the other alternate, and to get, to hit on what Garrett said, the bids came in very competitively, very competitively. On the batting cages, that gives you a second set of batting cages. And not only cages is that at the 60-some thousand dollars, that has the concrete, the turf, all the things that go along with putting those batting cages in. And again, if we're ever gonna do it, it would be cheaper to do it now as a package than later, for sure.
We're getting a volume discount, so.
Yes, yes. Same, same concept with the concrete, I was saying, on the extra parking, it says in the parking lot, getting a lot better deal.
How, how much under budget are we coming in if we're adding in both the alternates as well? Or does it put us right?
About 200,000 under.
Yeah, it'd be still in the 200.
That's, that's the whole project budget, which includes the science rooms.
Okay.
So.
And does, that does not include the air conditioning, though? That's separate.
We have a placeholder.
That's in here.
There's a placeholder.
Oh, so we, we were able to add in the air conditioning and get, oh.
Yep.
Motion.
The science room, air conditioning.
Oh, the science room, air conditioning.
The science room air conditioning is actually gonna cover a little bit more than the science room.
Yeah, yeah. But just be clear on which.
Yeah, yeah. Not, not the whole school.
Now, this other AC heat bid that we just tabled, that's for.
That's this.
That is this.
This, oh.
We just don't know what the cost is gonna be yet.
We have a placeholder of 160,000 in there right now.
Okay, four, four of the.
Yes, and we're just working on what that bid looks like.
What it means.
Because I was told four rooms, this, the bid sheet says two. We just wanna clarify to make sure we have a true understanding of what we're approving.
We'll free up another $80,000 if.
Right.
That is the case. So with all that, does anybody else have any questions?
Just aside, when, are, are we gonna try with the, save money to get some air conditioning for the math rooms and stuff?
We have, it's all being worked on. I believe we're taking bids here shortly for.
Well, let's get the first bid first.
But we gotta get the first one figured out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the biggest problem.
The, the plan is, is that we do the science and the, and the, the rooms that would qualify for it this summer. And the way we worked it out, that seemed to work really well for our contractor is if we open it up and, and do a bid, let's say at the beginning of June or the end of May, for all of next year, because they come in, like, they were here over Christmas break and did a ton of work, so that they're ready to, like in our middle school, so that they're ready to just fly when school gets out. So that project will get finished. But we gave them from, I think, Thanksgiving break or Christmas break through the end of summer to do it. So we are thinking to do the same thing for the high school version next year, so that they can come in throughout the school year, prep things, and that, because if we just wait for summer, that's a real quick time crunch. So we're trying to give our contractors more time to do.
Great. I'd still like to try and shoot to get it this summer if we can, but.
But that's not.
Here's the challenge with that, is look where we're at right now, just trying to figure out these four rooms. Like, it's gotta be economical. It cannot be.
You gotta have the funds, too. Agreed.
Let's go.
Well.
So with all that.
So what's your motion?
I would motion that we approve all bids, including alternate one and two.
Okay, it's been motioned. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
And what you mean by that is the low bid, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
That goes without saying, okay?
I just wanna clarify.
Legally, it has to be.
All right. Next, we have an action item for bids for the roof replacement.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So on the roof replacement, I have read through all four of these bids, but I think it's like four actually, for the roof, technically. Two of them to be right off the bat. We have two lower bidders. I would like to get a little more clarification from each one of them on exactly what they are doing. Because their scope, obviously, if you look at the scope of Academy and Central, the two higher bids, it is very detailed on what they're doing, and very much says, hey, we're not gonna do this if you do this, it's extra. Whereas the other two, it looks like they might have included, they're not as big a company, but they may have included a few things that, so see right here, he's got TNM, like time material, if he runs into the wet stuff. I would like to talk to Green Roofing and see, because obviously, we're replacing our roof for a reason. There's gonna be wet stuff when you cut into it, when you go to remove. So I would like to at least clarify with those two bidders, Green and, I can't pronounce the other one, I'm sorry, I'll butcher it.
What they're actually quoting?
What they're, yes, I would just like to do that. If we're already kinda gonna have a little meeting, I would like to, he has nothing to do with it.
I was gonna say, where, I, okay, all right.
Yeah, sorry. But I just wanna get a little more clarification, guys. Green, like, the last two bids came in, I think, Sharon would I be corrected, saying like last Thursday and Monday, or Thursday and Saturday, whatever. It was very quick. So I'd just like to get a little more clarification, because we're gonna save a lot of money if we go with one of these two, but I just wanna make sure we're covering the same basis.
So are you proposing to table this one?
Table that one, yes.
And break it up with AC?
Go ahead.
I just had a question. Remove, all, refuse, what does that mean?
That's garbage and rubbish, is what it is.
So that doesn't cover what you're talking about?
No.
And that's, I, I want to, that's why I would like to talk to them a little bit with Rick
and just see exactly what we're getting. Cause I, I would say, yes, let's use one of these lower two. I just wanna make sure we're getting what we should be getting.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and it's nice to see a local bidder, too.
Yes, I, I would love to use a local if we can. I just wanna make sure, obviously, we're in a position where it's gotta be lowest competent person to do it. So.
So we're gonna.
I would like to table.
Table that one, and then bring it up potentially when we have the, the special meeting for the AC heat bid, presuming you get both those coordinated together?
Yes.
Okay. Any objection to that? All right. All right, next, we have bids for the concrete work, also as far as an action.
I would say on those ones, read both bids, they're both exactly the same. I motion that we accept the bid from Stromax to go ahead and replace the concrete.
Real quick discussion on that. What concrete is, isn't that part of what?
Nope, it has it all detailed out, it's maintenance concrete items.
Oh, maintenance concrete, okay, all right.
Yeah, like the engines over in front of the elementary that need some serious work, couple of the other doors that need, have some tripping hazards, so.
Okay, so it's maintenance concrete, got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Wow. That's no difference.
Any other discussion? Okay, it's been properly moved, a second?
All second.
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right, next, we have the stash, stash, staff engagement survey companies. Yeah. So this is, I think, something Dr. Detlinger and Ms. Bowman were working on.
That's good, there we are. We just had, the conversation, I think, a lot of conversation is centered around culture, and this isn't new this year. This is something that we've kind of been tackling for, really since COVID, I would say, hard-hitting, but it's an ongoing process. And I think the last two years, we've had very deliberate district-wide culture work. But it's, it's always hard to measure that if, if you don't have a standard tool. So we would send out a survey, and we'd get responses, and we'd make decisions based on that for PD or professional learning, or maybe some activities, you know, get a food truck in, or just some fun things. And so when I was visiting with two of the board members, there was a kind of a consensus that it might be good to look into a company that kind of does that for a living, right? Just getting us processes by which we can use metrics, get a pulse on our staff, make goals around it or action plans around it. And so Jen and I talked with five different companies, one of them we didn't put on here because we were not at all impressed. But we talked to different companies to find out, well, I guess we did put five on here, but maybe we didn't put a lot of information. And really, if you look at number four and five, that's where we wanna center our attention because those were the most comprehensive and the most cost-effective. They, they both come with options to create action plans, to do some heat mapping, which I know is a request of, a consideration for the board. Some of them require everyone to have a license if they're doing a survey, and that's why the cost looks a little bit higher. But you can see kind of how they, how they line up. So we're looking at LEAP SUM, which is 150 licenses for the surveys, goals, meetings, and then instant feedback. Standard pricing was $11, and we said we've got 95% of our people aren't gonna use this every day, but our administrative team and our directors. So they knock that down to $5 a month per user, which is about $9,000 a year. And the other one is Elevate, or Elevate, or I don't even know how to say it. They're from Sweden. They're on a completely different time zone than us. But theirs is about $8,000 to $10,000 in pricing packages for 150 employees. Um, and that's if we would have, you know, 20 main users and then 150 that, um, that do just occasional surveys on it. And so they both come in and around with, with onboarding costs. I think onboarding with, um, Elevate is about $11,000. I just had it up on my phone, let me look. Um, yeah, it's about $11,000 and Leapsum is about $9,000. So, um, I think we're making the recommendation that we go with Leapsum, um, to, to provide this service, uh, to get some more authentic data about culture and, um, how we're doing on action plans and making sure we're transparent on those action plans. So if we take an item and put it on there, let's say that there's a question about, um, transparency or communication or, um, whatever it is, and we put it on there as an action plan. Anytime we update that work, it can be communicated out to with, with our teachers. So I think, and our staff, because I think one of the things that happens is we, we oftentimes do a ton of work. Um, and, and we communicate it, but I didn't read that email or I, you know, I skimmed it and I didn't get all the details. So this will give an actual action item from this program, um, and it'll have history included in it. So there's just a lot of, I think, more continuity in communicating, um, steps that are being taken so that people understand the processes that we're using. I think from a board perspective, there was a, a question about heat mapping. Are we seeing themes that are popping up? Are we seeing trends that we want to pay attention to and get on the front end of? Um, and this allows for that. So a lot of, I think, really positive system-wide, um, evaluation tools built into this. They, they have their own questions, we can make up our own, um, there's just a lot of flexibility with it.
Just a look at, um, satchel pulse at all. Sharon, move that list.
No, they're just the ones that we have there.
Okay. Is there a minimum of users, sorry. Is there a minimum of users for Leapsum? Cause I know it says 150 licenses.
Yeah.
I mean, how many do we think?
That's all of our staff.
Okay.
So that's what we based both of the bids on. We just said 150, knowing that most of the staff is only going to take the surveys on it. Um, you know, directors, administrators will look at it to, to take action on, school board, obviously. But in their plan, you had to buy a license for every person, even if they were just taking the survey. But that's why they reduced it from $11 because they're not all going to be using it to $5 because that's just their model. Um, the other one, Elevate, theirs is 150 employees, but only 20 are going to be using it, kind of like what we told Leapsum. And so their cost is based on that same model, they just price it a little differently. But both of them are for 150 users with 20 users using it more frequently than just the people taking the surveys.
Could this replace this license? Could this replace like the, um, the sports survey that's sent out?
Yeah, we, and I don't know if we can send it to parents.
They have the license.
Well, they'd have to have a license.
They'd have to have the license.
That's true, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Well, for, for the Leapsum, you would, but for the, for the Elevate.
Both of them, I don't, I don't think either one of them allows for, because you, we have to give them our addresses that we want.
So never mind.
Yeah, we don't want to do that, too many licenses.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll take the free option.
Yeah.
So, uh, a few questions on, on this, more tactical. So do both of them do the Likens scale for the, for the, the survey response? Because again, for this to be effective, people have to fill it out. So you don't want to send them a survey that takes them an hour and a half to fill it out. Your teachers, your staff won't do it. So do they, do they both do the Likens scale, um, type?
Yeah, so this is what we put in as our requirements, just so everybody on the, on the team can hear. We wanted a five-point Likert scale, um, no more than 15 minutes. We wanted flexible automated schedules for different targeted groups. Um, we wanted custom questions and drivers, meaning we wanted some questions already generated. Um, we wanted custom survey invites, so we ask people and we can get responses. We wanted some open-ended questions. We wanted the ability for comments. We wanted automated push notifications. Um, we wanted, um, easy to use dashboard. Um, we wanted something that would generate heat maps. We wanted anonymous chat, so people who filled out the survey wouldn't feel like there would be any kind of question about, you know, am I going to be in trouble for this? Um, and then we wanted something that had action plans or action-oriented objects so that we could do something with the data, right? Not just collect it, but actually make action plans around it. So those are the things that we had asked for and both of them have those capabilities.
Okay, perfect. And, and I don't know if I heard this in that list, but do we have the ability to, um, send out separate surveys based off certain categories or grouping? Or understand, like, we want them to be anonymous, like, we don't want to be able to trace back whose answer we had, but we can say this was a high school staff or this was a, you know, staff member.
And both of them have the feature, kind of like what our.
Like demographics.
Yeah, just demographics, so.
And it, they also have the feature that if you submit something, we don't see who it is, but we can ask a question to follow up without knowing who it is. So if you say, um, we need to have better communication between, um, special ed and activities, right?
It's just the norm.
If that's the case, then we can send the follow-up. Yeah, we can send the follow-up to get what they mean by that, right? So we can send the follow-up without knowing who it is and get more feedback, which is I think one of our challenges is somebody will put something in there, we're like, ah, what does this mean? And then we can ask for clarifying questions without actually identifying who it is.
No, I think, I think that's great. For me, just, I, I, I know there may be some hot topics that are important in high school, but maybe not the same in elementary, right? So to being able to distinguish those demographics and they're not canceling each other out and say, okay, these are the heat map items for high school, we need to work on it. Here are the heat map items for, for, you know, elementary, that's what we need to work on and staff as well.
Right, so bus drivers would get a different survey than cooks or a different survey than associates. Specific to what the directors had questions about or what the board wanted to get more information on it.
Um, I'm super excited about this. This is something, um, I know Melissa is excited about as well. Um, and, and I appreciate, um, you working on this and I will happily entertain a motion to approve. What was your recommendation?
Leapsum.
Leapsum.
Is it automatic renewal, the contract?
Yes and no, I mean, we, we have, we get a statement every year, but we, I think we evaluate it and see.
One year.
Yeah, it's a one-year license for it to start, but then I don't think you have a lot to do to get a second.
Yeah.
You know, you just, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
He said you were excited.
I am, but I.
Do you have more questions?
The price, I'm a little.
Oh, what funds, I'm sorry, yeah, that's good. What funds does this come out of?
General.
Or could you take it out?
Yeah, we could probably take it out of PD, um, because whatever we do is either training for administrators, more training for staff. I mean, there's an argument to be made that we're collecting data to make the, the system better for education. So we might be able to use PD funds for it.
Yeah, I'm excited about it, yes, I absolutely am excited about it. I just, the funding part of it was, I don't want something else to fall through the cracks. That's important. That's $9,000 and that's.
Yeah.
Do you feel we have the PD funds and it's worth the investment?
I mean, if, if we can use it the way, I mean, the board would have to be actively, actively engaged in that, right? I mean, it's only as good as we use it, so, um, I think we could easily do it. I mean, we have the funds to do it, we could do it for a year and then evaluate and see, did we get results that we wanted? Did it, did the action planning work effectively to give you, the public or, or staff more knowledge? Um, did it help with that culture pull, you know what I mean? Like, if we can evaluate it and decide if we want to do it again.
Yeah, I think I make a motion to go with Leapsum, you know, on a one-year basis, you know, then get back together and.
Been moved for a one-year license approval for Leapsum? Now a second?
I second it.
All right, been properly moved in second, all those in favor, signify by aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, did you say aye?
Yeah, I'm aye on that.
All right.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, um, next we have the daycare preschool rate sheet with summer options. It does, uh, require an action, Melissa?
I have a question.
What, I do?
I know. Okay, so, um, the childcare summer rates, Danielle?
Yep.
$3 a day, 60 for two, 90 for three, 125 for four. And 150 for five. Why are we charging $5 extra for the fourth day? I'm just messing.
Just for fun.
I know it was a typo.
Yeah, um, yeah. I'll double check with her and we can adjust it.
Make sure she doesn't want $5 for something.
No, well, maybe it just, you know, that fourth day really. Might, that they don't care anymore.
Yeah, exactly.
I would just, I would just maybe approve that with that typo being adjusted.
120.
Yep.
Four days a week at 120.
Yes, well, you can mess with me all you want. You can tell I didn't make that with the QC things on there, so.
It's very artistic.
Yes.
None of these have changed, have they?
They, I would say they have gone up slightly. So I, we had a specific conversation around the preschool rates and the daycare rates for kind of going into the fall. And the reason we did this is because we have, um, kind of consideration. So a whole can of worms, um, and I'll try to be quick with this. But we, we've traditionally ran three, four-year-old preschool classrooms, but the last several years, they've been, um, nowhere near max capacity. And so that's, you know, a concern. And so looking at other options, we talked about, you know, what if families are, you know, some families are okay with a half-day preschool and then we utilize our daycare, which, which can house more kids or different things. So trying to be creative. And so what you can see on there is our preschool rates, just our, our afternoon. Our morning four-year-old preschool is free, state-funded, um, with that point five that we get for those guys. But our afternoon is a, is a tuition-based piece. And so that what's been done here is an alignment between a daycare rate and a preschool afternoon rate that are more similar. And also that preschool rate did come up a little bit from what's being charged right now. I think right now, uh, 205 is the current rate for a four-year-old. Um, and right now, I can't, I don't know where that is on the paper, but, um, in the top box. 250, so that's $45 per month adjustment. Um, so, but it's still, again, I would argue extremely low compared to all other, anywhere else we look, we're still way at the bottom of, of the norm, so, um.
How do we do this year on enrollment? Are we?
So, yep, I, I should have brought that up. I didn't get on my update, but, um, we have, we have two three-year-old preschool classrooms and they operate at 16, um, student, a ratio of 16, and we had 32 register. So that filled, we currently run two rooms and they are just right at capacity right now. And that fills our three-year-old program. So right now, it's looking like there will be a waitlist if anybody else, um, requests three-year-old preschool. Unless we get closer to that 16 again and we don't have a room to put them in, so that would be a whole nother can of worms. But if we get closer to another 16 on a waitlist, then that would be a consideration if we can find a closet to shove them in or something, I don't know, we'll figure it out. Um, but it's, but you have to be careful, again, that's a, you know, you're talking a, a ratio of eight, so you're paying two adults. And if you have a room that's not to capacity, that can strain our system. And so you want to be careful with that. And then, um, with four-year-old preschool, um, the question is really, can we function with two rooms instead of three and still get everybody what they want? Um, and right now, I, I don't have that exact number. Um, I want to say, uh, it's going to be a challenge for sure. Um, there were, I, I want to say a total of, uh, 43 or 44 students on the paper. The large majority want, um, full day, but there are some that want half-day. There are some that want, you know, PM and, and so it's a kind of a puzzle piece to see, can we make this all work? Challenges will be if we decide to go with two rooms because we know we're at capacity and we, you know, that's financially a, you know, economical thing to do. Uh, but then, you know, down the road, we have two kids that want to join our program and we don't have a seat for them or things like that. So, um, right now, it's at the spot where our preschool team is looking at it, um, trying to make rosters, trying to find ways to get everybody what they want and, and still make sure we're given a quality service and, and not putting a strain and those types of things. So right now, both programs are full at two rooms and we'll have to see where we go on that four-year-old.
And you have a waitlist for the four-year-olds, it sounds like, maybe?
We would try really hard not to waitlist. Um, we would look more at a few more moving to half-day instead of full-day, um, in order to get all of them in. You don't, we, as we look at that data, you know, that early intervention is really important. So the last thing we want is a four-year-old not getting into a program.
So how much did we grow from last year to this year?
Um, right now, I, I don't know the answer to that. I think there really were about the same amount of kids. But the problem is we're running three classrooms, which means three licensed teachers and three certified parent professionals with only 14-ish kids in each room. It's not very self-sustaining, so we've got to.
And just as a, as a side, and we've talked about this before, um, the, the preschool weighting at point five right now is a conversation of the state house. Should we move that to one, right? So if you're thinking, yeah, I want all these kids to be in preschool, that would be a great thing to advocate for, is to move that weighting from a point five to a one, because it really does help rural schools and, and target some of that early learning so that we don't have gaps for kids. Um, we know that it's hard for parents to get here to pick kids up at the middle of the day. Many of them work in Des Moines or, or in a surrounding community. And so, um, we understand that's a consideration, but we also have to be fiscally responsible. If we're only being paid a half for each one, then we have to obviously take that into consideration as we do staffing. So that's an, that's an opportunity for advocacy because they are talking about it moving to one, so.
Definitely.
And, and again, I go back to that highly effective teacher team and they'll spend a lot of time trying to figure out, how do we, how do we build this program in a way that's sustainable and also really gets our kids set up for success? So that'll be more to come in the future. Um, but this aligns the prices, so if a student's in AM preschool and then bounces to daycare or if a student's in all-day preschool, they're paying relatively the same thing where before prices were not there and 205 was not even on the paper in comparison to, um, other, other entities, so. Any other questions regarding that?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion that does require an action for the rate sheet?
I will make a motion to approve. With the $120 change.
Yes.
Typo.
Oh, with, yes, with the change to $120.
Possibly, yeah.
No, we could.
It's been properly moved, seconded? All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by aye? Aye? Opposed?
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Uh, next, just an informational only item for the 2024-2025 budget discussion. Um, we've had some legislative changes that require us to have two hearings that Ted's super excited about.
Yes.
You and everybody else in the state, every county, every city, every school district.
So I attended a workshop on February 2nd with Larry Siegel. And we just kind of went through, he held, he holds these throughout the whole state. And, uh, we kind of went through, by the time you leave, you kind of have your budget done and know what you need to do, so. And with all the changes, it was more important that I attend that. But anyway, last year, the state legislature changed the process for school districts in Iowa in how district budgets are approved. Two hearings are now required, as you said, to adopt the school budget. The date to certify our budget, um, at the Madison County Auditor's Office was changed from April 15th to April 30th. So it gives us more time, but there's more processes in it. Um, the property tax hearing data is due to the Department of Management by March 15th. In the district posts, um, so we're going to post the proposed property tax notice on the district website. And then this information has the details, detailed levies on it, the individual levies. So management fund and general levy and all that. Um, the county auditors will mail out taxpayer notices by March 20th. So everybody's, every property owner's going to get a statement. And the property tax hearing statement from the county is more of a summary, which includes all taxing authorities, including cities, counties, and school districts. The one that we put on our site is going to be very specific, like I said, with our levies. So now we're recommending to hold the first hearing on March 25th, which is the date for our regular March board meeting. This is also the first date that the hearing can be held. We need to publish the notice of public hearing on March 13th, which meets the requirement of the 10 to 20-day rule for publishing before the hearing. It's recommended that we publish at the maximum, so the district cannot adopt higher than what we publish. You know, it, we, we need to publish high and then we can bring it down.
That's because we, so waiting on the SSA finalization.
Waiting on a lot of decisions by the state house.
So it could be two and a half, it could be three, but if they don't do anything, it could be zero.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then we're recommending, um, the second hearing on April 29th, which is the, um, April board meeting.
And we're hoping by that point that SSA, what, what happens if SSA isn't?
Well, when I asked that, when we asked that question this morning, um, the governor indicated that it would probably be extended.
Okay.
But that's going to cause such a wrinkle for cities and counties.
Yeah, because taxes, the, the mailing out of all the letters and.
Yeah.
Ooh, golly.
And that's why, if anything, we'll just publish high and bring it down.
Yeah.
So.
And that's what they recommend.
Right.
Okay.
And then I'll take the.
But it's ticker shock to, to community, you know, and you see that, so. Um, but some of these things, we don't control the timeline on, so.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on that?
You good with those dates?
Yeah, yes, sir. Okay. All right, uh, next item, um, the board will be going into closed session, uh, for student disciplinary hearings. Um, there's a recommended motion there for one of you to read and we can go from there.
I motion, um, to consider disciplinary action against a student as provided by Iowa Code Section 21.51E and to review and discuss records, which are required by state or federal law to be kept confidential as provided by Iowa Code Section 21.51A.
It's been properly moved, I'm going to give a second.
I second it.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, aye? Opposed?
Closed session, five zero.
Okay.
Two-minute break is the.
Yeah, two-minute break.